Good morning. The City of Boston zoning board of appeal hearing for March 8th is now in session. This hearing is being conducted in accordance with the applicable provisions of the open meeting law, including the updated provisions enacted by the legislature last year. The new law allows the board to continue its practice of holding virtual hearings until July 15th, 2022. The hearing of this board is being held remotely via the Zoom webinar event platform. This hearing is also being livestreamed. In order to ensure this hearing of the board is open to the public, members of the public may access this hearing through telephone and video conferencing. The information for connecting to this hearing is listed on today's hearing agenda, which is posted on the public notices page of the city's website, boston.gov. Members of the public will enter the virtual hearing as attendees, which means you will not see yourself on the screen and you will be muted throughout unless administratively unmuted when asked to comment. Board members, applicants, and their attorneys or representatives will participate in the hearing as panelists, and they will appear alongside the presentation materials when speaking. Panelists are strongly encouraged to keep video on while presenting to the board. Can I have the next slide, please? As with our in-person meetings, comments and support will be followed by comments in opposition. The order of comments is as follows: elected officials, representatives of elected officials, and members of the public. The chair may limit the number of people called upon to offer comment and the time for commenting as time constraints require. For that reason, the board prefers to hear from members of the public who are most impacted by a project, that is, those individuals who live closest to the project. If you wish to comment on an appeal, please click the raise hand button along the bottom of your screen in the Zoom webinar platform. Click it again, and your hand should go down. When the host sees your hand, you will receive a request to unmute yourself. Select yes, and you should be able to talk. If you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand. You must press *6 to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Again, if you are connected to the hearing by telephone, please press *9 to raise and lower your hand. Press *6 to unmute yourself after you receive the request from the host. Those called upon to comment will be asked to state their names and addresses first before they provide their comment. In the interest of time and to ensure that you have enough time to do so, please raise your hand as soon as Mr. Fortune reads the address into the record. Do not raise your hand before the relevant address is called, or the meeting host will not know to call on you at the appropriate time. Once you've put your name and address and stated your concerns or support of a project, please lower your hand immediately so that we can then move on to the next person. These instructions will be repeated throughout the hearing. So let me take a roll call. Let me make sure everybody's here. Mr. Fortune?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Olick?
I'm here. Good morning.
Good morning. Ms. Dong?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Regiro?
Morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning. Mr. Legris?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Good morning, and Mr. Robinson?
Good morning.
Good morning. Mr. Hampton from the BPDA?
Good morning, Madam Chair.
Don't sound so excited, Jeff. And before we start, I'd like to congratulate Ms. Ambassador Jessica on her acknowledgement. So, good job, Ms. Ambassador.
Thank you so much.
So let us proceed with the agenda. May I hear from Mr. on the adoption of the electronic signature provision, please?
Madam Chair, I'm going to call it into the record first, and then Mr. Broom will speak on it if anybody has any questions. This is the First Order of Business, the vote of adoption of the electronic signature provisions of Mass General Law, Chapter 110G. The board will vote on whether to adopt the provisions of Mass General Law, see, Chapter 110G, as required by Land Court to allow those who receive relief from the board to register the board's decisions with the Suffolk County Register of Deeds. Mr. Broom, is there any for any questions? Does anybody have any?
Yes, Mr. Broom. Can you tell us how operationally this will be done? And will it be done for all projects, or is it optional?
Yes, Madam Chair. This will be done for all projects. So someone from the Land Court reached out to our office and basically said, once we take this vote, I will write up a decision that you will all sign, basically verifying that the board has adopted these provisions and that it does have permission to do, or has regular practice is using electronic signatures for its decisions. That document will be recorded with the Land Court, and then all of the citizens and the people are registering will reference that document so that they know the electronic signatures are valid.
Okay, so I had a couple of questions because when we make a decision, our decisions are based on reviews of plans and consistency with plans. With these decisions, is there any way that we need to be more precise with our decisions? For example, if somebody has a roof deck violation because they're proposing a roof deck and then, you know, through the process decide to eliminate that roof deck, do we need to go very specifically on record to say that that need for that violation has been denied?
Oh, yes, Madam Chair. That's certainly helpful. We can always include a proviso saying that the decision doesn't grant a particular variance or conditional use permit that the board may find.
So, but we do need to have that as part of the motion so that it is included in the decision?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions from the board? Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion of revision.
Is there... All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Next order of business is approval of the hearing minutes of February 8th, 2022, and February 15th of 2022, we need a motion.
Motion to approve.
Madam Chair, motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Okay, on the extensions, I'm going to, I'm going to read after I ask, I'm going to read into the record and then read what it is in regards to the purpose, and then I'll ask for the applicant for the name and their address, or vice versa. The first extension is BOA 938-19262 to 64 Baxter Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members, George Maransy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Maransy. Regarding 6264 Baxter Street, the board originally granted this relief on February 7th of 2020, so this is the applicant's first request for extension. Toning applies to this relief. With tolling, the new expiration date for this relief is May 15th, 2023. I recommend that the board confirm that the relief remains valid until that date for the record.
Motion, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair. Motion to confirm the relief remains valid with all applicable tolling through May 15th, Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Calling the next two cases for extension, calling BOA 917-588-345 to 345B Baker Street. There is companion case, BOA 917-579-349 to 349A Baker Street. Name and address for the record, please.
George Maransy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Maransy. In regards to 345, 345B and 349, 349A Baker Street, the board originally granted relief for these matters on February 26th, 2019, and it granted the first extension of relief until March 15th, 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original relief remains valid until June 3rd, 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until March 15th, 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account this would only be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Madam Chair, motion to confirm the relief remains valid through June 3rd, 2022 with all applicable tolling, and further moved that relief be extended through March 15th, 2023, which of course would include all applicable tolling. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next extension, calling BOA 906-535-261 Bolton Street. Name and address for the record, please.
George Maransy, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston.
Thank you, Mr. Maransy. Regarding 261 Bolton Street, the board originally granted relief for these matters on February 26th of 2019, and it granted its first extension of that relief until March 15th, 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original relief remains valid until June 3rd, 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until March 15th, 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances, taking into account that this would only be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Motion to confirm the relief remains valid until through June 3rd, 2022, and further moved to extend relief through March 15th, 2023, including any and all applicable tolling. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 103-34704 Braintree Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Matt Echol with Drago Intoscano with the business address of 11 Beacon Street. Mr. Secretary, just so you know, this case as well as the next five are all companion cases. I don't know if you want to read them into the record together.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Echol. I was going to ask that question, but it didn't show it being a companion, so I just wanted to double check with you. So the next five, all the way to...
Not including 92 Maple.
I'm sorry?
Not including 92 Maple.
Correct, that's being withdrawn.
Correct.
Okay, let me call all those in for the record then. Thank you very much for clarifying. The next case, companion case is BOA 103-3475, 334 to 362 Cambridge Street. Case BOA 103-34741 Highgate Street. Case BOA 103-346816 Highgate Street. And case BOA 103-3472, 8 to 12 Wilton Street. And BOA 103-346920 Braintree Street. So just bear with me because I'm going to call all these in for the record, each one. Okay. Regarding Ford Braintree Street, the board originally granted this relief on March 13th, 2020. Toning does not apply because this relief was not valid prior to the COVID-19 state of emergency that began on March 10th, 2020. This relief expires on March 13th, 2020. The applicant now requests their first extension. I recommend that the board grant the additional extension if it determines it appropriate under the circumstances. Mr. Echol, just hold on two seconds. I just want to make sure that these are all the same, and I believe they are. Direct me if I'm wrong, and the dates are all the same?
They should all be the same. They were granted as one article, Lady Large.
Madam Chair, if the pleasure is for me to just, we accept that the purpose is the same for all of those addresses that were called into the record?
Let's get a motion going then. Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Motion for a one-year extension.
Is there a second?
Mr. Regiro, that would be March 13th. It expires on March 13th, 2022, so it would be March 13th, 2023?
Yeah, inclusive of all toll, and any toll, it doesn't apply.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, the next case on Maple Street is being withdrawn, so I'm going to call it into the record. Case BOA 826-857, 92 Maple Street is being withdrawn, so I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Second, Legris.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Is Mr. Linz on?
I am, Attorney Lawrence Catino. I'm calling for today.
Lauren, is Maverick Street and Geneva Street companion cases?
They are not companion cases.
Okay, thank you, Lauren. The next case, calling BOA 101-3467-255 Maverick Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Lawrence Catino from Richard Linz's office, 245 Sumner Street in East Boston.
Thank you. Regarding 255 Maverick Street, the board originally granted this relief on March 13th, 2020. Toning does not apply because this relief was not valid prior to the COVID-19 state of emergency that began on March 10th, 2020. The relief expires on March 13th, 2022. The applicant now requests for their first extension. I recommend that the board grant the additional extension if it determines that it is appropriate under the circumstances.
Motion to extend for one year from the date of expiration of relief through March 13th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Regarding the next case, next case, BOA 101-3465, 10 Geneva Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Attorney Lawrence Catino from Richard Linz's office, 245 Sumner Street in East Boston.
Thank you, Ms. Catino. In regards to the board originally granted, 10 Geneva, the board originally granted this relief on March 13th, 2020. Toning does not apply because this relief was not valid, was not valid prior to the COVID-19 state of emergency that began on March 10th, 2020. This relief expires on March 13th, 2022. The applicant now requests their first extension. I recommend that the board grant the additional extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances.
Motion to extend for one year from the date of expiration of relief through March 13th, 2023.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 982-435-198 Woodrow Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, with a business address of 51 Dobson Road.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Regarding 198 Woodrow Avenue, the board originally granted this relief on January 31st, 2020, so this is the applicant's first request for an extension. Toning applies to this relief. With tolling, the new expiration date for this relief is May 8th, 2023. I recommend that the board confirm for the relief to remain valid until that date for the record.
Madam Chair, motion to confirm, motion to confirm the relief remains valid through May 8th, 2023 with any and all applicable tolling.
Is there a... All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 101-9011, 22 to 24 Woodbine Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Again, good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney Derek Small, with his address of 51 Dobson Road.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Regarding 2224 Woodbine Street, the board originally granted this relief on January 31st of 2020, so this is the applicant's first request for extension. Toning applies to this relief. With tolling, the new expiration date for this relief is May 8th, 2023. I recommend that the board confirm that relief remains valid until that date for the record.
Madam Chair, motion to confirm the relief remains valid through May 8th, 2023 with any and all applicable...
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much. Have a good day.
You too. Calling the last case for extensions, calling BOA 853-785-68 Forest Street. Name and address for the record, please. Is Ms. Williams on?
If we have a minute, can I ask a clarifying question from Mr. Broom? Oh, sorry, is Ms. Williams on? Is somebody here for this?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Name and address for the record, please.
68...
68 Forest Street. Ward 8.
Your name, I'm sorry.
Eunice Williams. I'm sorry, Eunice Williams. I'm sorry.
That's okay, thank you.
The speaker is not that loud, so...
That's okay.
Bear with us, I'm sorry about that.
I got a voice through radio. Hopefully you can hear me okay. So this regarding 68 Forest Street, the board originally granted relief for this matter on March 1st of 2019 and granted the first extension of relief until March 1st, 2022. However, that extension was unnecessary. With tolling, the original relief remains valid until June 6th, 2022. I recommend that the board confirm for the record that the relief remains valid until that date. The applicant now also requests an additional extension until March 1st, 2023. I recommend that the board grant that additional extension if it determines that it's appropriate under the circumstances. Taking into account that this would only be the applicant's first necessary extension.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yes.
Hold on. May I have a motion?
Motion to confirm that relief remains valid with any and all applicable tolling through June 6th, 2022, and so further moved that relief shall remain valid for an additional period through March 1st, 2023. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Ms. Williams, obviously this is a first time for you on this, so please make sure that your project starts moving soon, okay?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, did you have a question for Mr. Broom?
No, I'll, it's okay. Thank you.
Okay. Calling the next case, my board final arbiter, calling BOA 116-02977, 73 to 75 Causeway Street. The applicant seeks to continue to use premises for an open-air public parking lot for a fee with capacity of two handicap parking spaces beyond the expiration date of December 31st, 2021, in conjunction with 1921 Lancaster Street and 3139 Lancaster Street. The violation is Article 6, Section 03A. Additional conditions is restricted parking district. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. Members of the board, Attorney David Gottlieb with the business address of 309 Washington Street in Brighton. It's last before the board regarding the commercial parking lot on August 10th, 2021, and there was a notice of decision entered September 17th granting two handicap parking spaces and one regular parking space. However, the issue with the Plans and Zoning Division was that the advertisement only advertised for two handicap spaces, so they wanted me to come back before the board to make sure that there was an appropriate advertisement. Thank you.
Has anybody seen the plans for this, or anybody remember this? You know, I'd like to just emphasize it before something. It's been on the agenda as board final arbiter. We need to understand it beforehand, so pre-work is done already. So, so that we can just make sure it moves expeditiously. Okay, so which is, which is the specific spot that we're talking about?
So, Madam Chair, if you just look up at the plan, it's right there where it says 7375 Causeway Street clearly says two handicap and one regular, but it was only advertised for the two handicap spaces.
Okay, and this, did this include screening and buffering? And was there anything related to signage on this one? I can't remember.
No, everything was approved. Actually, if you look at the notice of decision which was entered, it was a straight approval for two years until December 31, 2023. That's all we're asking for here, but we just need to come back before you so that the Plans and Zoning Division can issue us the appropriate permit with the correct capacity.
May I have a motion, please? Was there... I honestly cannot remember. Was there an issue with the angle? Was there, what was that?
The, no, the issue was that you wanted a new plan with the appropriate numbering of the parking spaces, which we completed. And, and the plan was completed by the professional land surveyor and the architect at the board, actually Hansi Better Barazza, approved this plan. If you can look down at the plan, I don't know if you can go down on the plan.
Just let me just ask you, it looks like those two handicap spots are tandem, is that true?
Correct, with the required little spacing as required under the Architectural Access Board, and the architect, Tim Burke, is here to speak on that.
Honestly, for board final arbiter, just to make sure, Counselor, because you've been coming back and forth with board final arbiter a few times, we need to get the homework done before, ahead of time, okay? So as far as Mr. Gottlieb is concerned, this is a note to staff that we should make sure that all work is done ahead of time.
Yeah, and do we have, do we have any recommendation from BTD on this either? Have they seen this? Yes, so BTD is, this plan is approved by BTD, yes.
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Calling the next case for a rediscussion, calling BOA 128-0948, 36 to 46 Main Street. This is a change of option from a dry cleaner ice cream parking takeout with four apartments and beauty parlour to four apartments, beauty parlour, and small retail shop with retail wine license. The violation is Article 62, Section 13, liquor store is conditional use in an NS sub-district. Name and address for the record, please.
Matthew Delisle for 3646 Main Street. I live at 50 Main Street. And Scott Holmes is also on the call if he could be unmuted, just being the attorney.
Please go ahead and tell us what's being proposed.
So we have, we have already begun a small retail pasta shop, which we've gone through the process with the Health Department and the Building Department to open that, and then now we are trying, we went through the ABC Board to obtain the license and we did our community outreach.
So you are, you are proposing to add a liquor license to this, this address, right? A liquor store? So give us details on that liquor store.
Yes, it's just retail wine and beer only, and it's just a small local shop that we're just selling, it's extremely small, four or 500 square feet, we're only selling beer and wine.
So this is a part of a pasta store?
Yes, so we have a small retail space where we're making homemade pastas, and then we have a small area where we're selling sauces and other retail items.
This is really accessory to that main use of a pasta store?
Correct.
Okay, and do you have, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, no question, very, it looks quite small and straightforward.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, members of the board. Caitlin Saberson from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The previous liaison in our office held a community meeting for this proposal, and the applicant worked with the neighborhood throughout the process. Since the board's referral on this proposal, the city issued a temporary at-risk permit for the applicant to sell beer and wine, and the community has been supportive, but at this time would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good evening, Madam Chair. Members of the board, the community, and Counselor, we would like to go on record in support of this proposal.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hand at the moment.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have a few letters of support.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
I'm going to call the 9:30 hearings for deferrals or withdrawals. If you can give me the address first, please?
566 East 3rd.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA 127-9390, 566 East 3rd Street. Name and address for the record.
Attorney Michael Cronin with Drago Intoscano, LLC, the business address of 11 Beacon Street.
And why are you... And why are you requesting a deferral?
We have resubmitted plans with changes, and they have yet to be re-reviewed by the Inspection Services Department.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries the date.
We have a date of April fifth at eleven-thirty.
Thank you.
May I ask, may I ask, Board members, can you, can I just hear your voices in support or in deferral or in opposition of these motions, please? Thank you. Sorry, Mr. Fortune, go ahead.
That's okay, Madam Chair. Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for nine-thirty? Nine-thirty only. Hearing none, I'll go to the first case, calling DOA one-two-eight six-five-seven-three, seventy-three Webster Street. This is seeking to erect a one-story addition in rear deck, renovate, destroy what will remain a three-family dwelling and no change of occupancy. The violation is Article twenty-seven G. This is in the East Boston iPod. Article fifty-three, section nine, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article fifty-three, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Article fifty-three, section fifty-two, roof structure restriction. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article fifty-three, section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article fifty-three, section nine, the usable open space is insufficient. And Article fifty-three, section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, once again, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Matt Ekel with Drago and Toscano, the business address of eleven Beacon Street in Boston. On behalf of Jessica Roberts and Erkan Baron, who own and reside at seventy-three Webster Street, they are also on this call. We also have Adam Glassman, the project architect, on this call. As mentioned, we are seeking to erect a one-story addition with a rear deck, also to install a sprinkler system and fire alarm system. Just to go quickly through the floor plans, currently, unit one is a bi-level unit in the basement and the first floor. We are not proposing any changes to this unit. It will remain a one-bedroom, two-bath unit. Moving up to the second floor, there's an existing two-bedroom, one-bath unit. We're proposing to re-arrange kind of the functionality of this floor. It'll remain a two-bedroom, but right now, there's currently two bedrooms with essentially just a kitchen. So what we're doing is renovating it to allow for two separate distinct bedrooms and then more of an open-area kitchen living room to provide more living space. Moving up to the third and fourth floor, that'll be proposed unit three. Again, unit three is already existing, but currently it just exists on the third floor. We're proposing to erect a one-story addition, which you can see there on the far right of your screen. This would allow for a open-area living, dining, kitchen area and three bedrooms on floor three. We're also proposing a rear deck, which you can see again on the far right of your screen, to provide some usable open living space up on that level. In terms of the violations that were written to the record, seeking relief for FAR allowed as one-point-oh, we're proposing a two-point-eight. Height, you're allowed three stories and thirty-five feet. We're proposing that fourth story and approximately thirty-nine feet. Side yard, we were cited, even though we're attached, we're going to remain attached where we are and then go straight up, so we won't be expanding the footprint at all. Same with the rear yard, we're not proposing any changes to the building footprint, so we're not altering the rear yard, and that rear addition's actually pulled in, as you can see there with the deck, so we have a twenty-six-foot rear setback. And then finally, we were cited for open space, even though we're not changing the occupancy, and we're actually adding, as I mentioned, one-hundred-and-sixty-five square feet with that proposed rear deck. We were also cited for iPod and roof structure restriction. So with that, I'll pause and take any questions or comments from the board.
Yes, please tell us about the basement unit, or the occupants in the basement.
Of course, Madam Chair. So we aren't proposing any changes to that level right now. There is a one-bedroom, one-bath, and laundry area in the basement with an interior stairway that goes up to the first floor, which provides the kitchen and living space for that unit. There is a full walkout, as you can see at the top left of your screen, and to a patio and backyard area. But again, we're not proposing any other changes. This is already existing and will remain the same.
Got it. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. Correct. There is a walkout, and the rooftop addition is consistent. There's other four-story buildings in there, and it is pulled back. No real questions on the proposed.
Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak in support of this proposal?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. Natalia Venites from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. This project has had a positive feedback media buzz, and was supported by the Jeffress Point Neighborhood Association, as they were happy that a family is able to stay in the neighborhood. At this time, I'm office to like to defer judgment to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. You're meeting here from City Councilor Lydia Edwards' office. We would like to go on record in support of this project.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hand at the moment.
Motion, I'll make a motion to approve.
Sorry, Mr. Jaro. We do have a few letters of support.
Thank you.
I'll make a motion to support, to approve what PPA designed here.
I'll second air.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling a next case, calling DOA one-two-two seven-nine-five-three, eighty-three to eighty-nine Devonshire Street. This is a change of use to retail cannabis. The violation is Article eight, section five. Location forbidden establishment within two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty feet from another existing cannabis establishment. Article eight, section seven, conditionally used provided that the cannabis establishment is not within two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty feet from another existing cannabis establishment or five-hundred feet from a school. Name and address, for the record, please.
Good morning, Alexis Kachuk, One State Street, Austin. I am here to speak with the applicants, Kobe Evans, Kevin Hart, and their security consultant, Danlin.
So, so let me clarify. This is not within five-hundred feet from a school, but you are within two-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty feet from another cannabis establishment?
That is correct.
Okay, so tell us which, which establishment that is?
It is a quarter of a mile from Twenty-One Mill Street.
Okay, and so tell us about the, what is proposed for this site and how it's going to be operated?
Sure. The, the site is approximately seven-thousand square feet. It's based on two-and-a-half levels. That will allow for the providing of an indoor waiting area, so there would be no queuing on the sidewalk. Retail operations and the indoor waiting room would be on the first floor. The other levels would just be used for administrative and staff-only uses. It is currently a vacant, um, commercial space. It's been vacant for a long time. The hours of operation would be nine a.m. to eight p.m., and the applicant has been working for several months with the downtown bid to discuss lighting, camera uses, and operational procedures.
So it's nine to eight, how many days a week?
Seven days a week.
Seven days, okay. And I think we've had these applicants before this board, so there should be more detail on how queuing is supposed to occur, what the online activity is, and so we need to understand that.
Perfect. Kobe, are you here to discuss that?
Yes, Madam Chair, thank you. My name is Kobe Evans. We came before this board roughly two years ago when we opened our first location in Dorchester Pure Oasis. I know that the city is sensitive towards queuing on the sidewalk, especially in such a densely populated neighborhood. We chose this space because it had an abundance of area inside. Working with our architects, we've designed it in a way where we won't have any queuing issues with the external of the building. We will have more than enough space to queue people in line, coupled with online ordering. We don't anticipate any issues with any of our patrons being queued on the sidewalk. Again, this is seven-thousand square feet, well more within the footprint of what we normally operate. But in the downtown area, it's very hard to find a landlord who's willing to rent to a cannabis operator. But based on our history, they were willing to take a chance with us. But with the excessive space, it does allow us for, you know, to have people inside in an, in an area that is climate-controlled and also where they're not going to encumber any of the pedestrians on the sidewalk.
Thank you. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I just, I guess I had one question. I just couldn't quite figure out where, sort of, loading and drop-off was going to occur when I was reviewing this. If you could just give me that quick, sort of.
Yeah, so loading and drop-off, there's a, so in the main door to the office building, right now, there are two options. They could either come in through our main entry, which is on the corner of Water and Devonshire, or right on Devonshire, there's a main entrance into the building, and that has an auxiliary door that would go into our space and right down into, right into our inventory room. So again, in the main entrance on Devonshire, Devonshire Street into the main building, that's where we would take deliveries off-hours.
Off-hours means?
So again, we're, we're probably not going to open until after ten o'clock, and so before ten o'clock, when our staff is on-site, we usually have staff that comes in at eight o'clock. So between eight o'clock and ten o'clock, we would take deliveries. And I believe that building does have a security concierge, which we wanted to leverage, you know, for the purpose of taking deliveries as well.
And I'm assuming you're saying this is eight a.m. to ten a.m.?
That we would have staff there, but we would not be in operation.
Okay, because I think it was represented that your hours of operation are nine to eight, seven days a week?
So from what I understand, in working with the State Cannabis Commission, hours of operation, I guess they define that in terms of when you are seeing customers versus when you can actually have people in the building. I'm not sure that there are any necessary restrictions on the state level of when you could be in the building, taking care of product and making sure that places.
So what we are asking is when will customers be allowed? Is that ten o'clock to eight p.m. then?
Correct.
Okay.
No further questions on the plans. There does seem to be quite a bit of extra space for queuing off the street as well.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, given the, the policy around the half-mile buffer, I'm just curious why the opponents chose to select a site that was within that half-mile.
I guess you could say that the site chose us because of the, downtown is actually not as big as we would like it to be, and there is, is, from what we understand, there's a sober school on Temple Place. So when you look at the buffer for the sober school, it takes the vast majority of downtown out of play. You know, and we really didn't want to try and, you know, of all things, we'd rather try and be closer to another dispensary versus being closer to a sober high school.
Yeah, no, I, I, I understand the rationale. It's just this keeps coming up again and again. We have some conditions that have been imposed by the city, and then we have some perfectly good reasons to ignore those conditions, but that's what this involves, is ignoring a set of policies that was voted on and enacted.
Commissioner, if I may, this is different than the other areas in that downtown crossings sees approximately two-hundred-and-thirty-thousand pedestrians each day. The other site that's within a quarter of a mile is about nine-hundred square feet. There is no indoor waiting area. It may be started off as a medical site.
No, we're very, we're very familiar with that, and we are familiar with the one that's further on. I don't know if it's at Friend Street. It's closer to the garden. It was the first one we saw. So we are familiar with, with the spots downtown. But, but you know, going back to Mr. Olick's question is, you know, why here?
Well, why here is because this was available space that was not within a school. It provided for indoor queuing. The downtown has an exponentially higher amount of foot traffic than a neighborhood. This wouldn't be clustered in a neighborhood, nor is it near any vulnerable populations. In any community meeting or discussion we've had, there has been no opposition. It's nearly impossible to find available space that is not near some form of a vulnerable population or face community opposition. So it's been a difficult but respectful balance that we have tried to maintain here. Additionally, when Twenty-One Mill Street was approved, the administration provided that they would not be shutting down the downtown to equity applicants.
No, please, we, we, we understand that, but our, our, we, we, that, we still have to get an answer, and we still need to be comfortable with the answer as to why here and why within X numbers of feet from an existing, existing space.
Madam Chair, Madam Chair, if I might.
Yes, Mr. Olick, go ahead.
I think all the rationale that the applicants have put forward makes sense. And I think these applicants are qualified applicants. The problem is that there is a city policy that, that has a buffer zone, and we either, we either choose to ignore it or we abide by it. And, and it may be that it's a faulty policy, very well maybe, but the problem is, we keep getting presented with situations where there's a policy that exists, and then, and then there's a, a proposal to ignore it. I, you know, I have repeatedly said that this is a, a really, it puts us in a very unsatisfactory situation.
But I do think it allows us to take it on a case-by-case basis because in, in a certain way, we are the only ones qualified to look at the big picture of what's happening around that with other kinds of appeals we've seen, not just cannabis-related, but other appeals. Mr. Rogiro, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I, I, I think, just real quickly on, I mean, the density of downtown is, is very different than a neighborhood, so the buffer zone thing, the applicant's explanation does make a lot of sense to me. My one question was about those windows on that beautiful facade there. Is there, are there anything, is there anything in the regulations that are going to affect those windows? Or are they going to remain like that? And it's going to be that beautiful facade there? I just would hate to see them covered up because of some regulation, and just a question, really.
Yeah, we spent a lot of times with our architect, and as you can imagine, you know, this building is, is pre-war. It's a very beautiful building. We don't have to do much in terms of, you know, putting it into operations. And so I think what, in, in this picture here, you'll see they have these, these polycarbonate panels. And we're going to see if we can use the polycarbonate panels in front of the windows to obfuscate the view. So you still get the light, but you're, you're, you're retaining the architectural integrity. And, but at the same time, you're meeting the CCC's requirement of people not being able to see the operations from the outside. And so we're just trying to find the right mix that will satisfy the architecture as well as the CCC.
Yeah, that, that's unfortunate. So from the street, you would just see blacked-out windows?
The CCC regulations are pretty clear. The state regulations, you really, you know, there's some wiggle room, and, and they have deferred to the local municipality in terms of what they would like to see. But, you know, in, in, in Dorchester, we, we've made the windows opaque with a film, and we're trying to find a happy medium between, you know, celebrating the architecture of the site, but still adhering to the state's regulation.
So is, is the regulation entire windows or at eye level, coverage at eye level?
So in, in, in Dorchester, we have the windows at eye level are covered, so if you're walking down the street, but the wind, there's another smaller window above that, that we've done nothing to. And so the, the CCC will acquiesce to local authority in terms of how the finished product is or how it's finally represented. So there are exclusions to their own rules, but we are trying to, you know, try and find some way to, to, to not drastically change the look and feel of a building, and, and we'll continue to work towards that as well.
Any other questions? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, good morning, Madam.
Oh, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Chulant Wong from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. We had done a community meeting for this applicant here on October twentieth, two thousand twenty-one. We received letters of support. We received letters of support for the applicant's proposal along with letters of non-opposition. At this time, we would like to defer to the judgment of the board.
Good morning, Madam of the Chairman, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Ed Sling's office. Please note, the councilor sent a letter of non-opposition to the cannabis war previously and to the zoning war this morning. The councilor has met with the proponent of this dispensary and understand the proponent has conducted a community process and met with neighbors and civic organizations. It should be noted for the proponent, the proposed location is within the half mile buffer zone of the existing dispensary. Pure Oasis has another location on Ruby Lab and was the first dispensary opened in Boston. So the operators have experience in the cannabis industry. Moreover, this is an equitable candidate, which will advance the city's goal in expanding equity and diversity in our cannabis industry. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, sorry about that, Jessica. We do have letters of support as well.
May I have a motion?
Madam Chair, I, I agree, I agree with Mr. Ehrlich. I move to, to deny, I'm not compelled by this argument, this location has found itself.
Is there a second? Is there a second to that motion? May I have another motion, please?
I'd like to make a motion to approve with the following providers, for this applicant only, and BPDA design review for those windows to try to keep them as transparent as possible, whether that includes building an interior wall to create a, a, a buffer or anything to not have those windows blacked out. I think that would be a real shame.
I'll, I'll second that, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose.
And I oppose not so much because I think, I think it's a good proposal. I think, I'm hoping that, that the city council will reconsider the guidelines because we, as I've said, it puts us in a difficult situation, so I'm opposed.
I, um, I vote in support, so the motion carries. I'm with you, Mark, I'm with you, Costa, but I do think that there are sudden circumstances in this, in the downtown that might make this a workable, a workable opportunity.
Well, in that case, the city council should make an exception for, on its buffer zone, which I would agree with.
Got it.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-two-eight-zero-seven-eight-zero-one-thirty-two West Ninth Street. This is direct, a new four-story, three-family with two parking spaces. The violation is Article twenty-five, Section five, flood hazard district. Article sixty-eight, Section thirty-three, off-street parking and loading. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the flood rate ratio is excessive. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the building has excessive infee. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the usable open space is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, front yard is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, side yard is insufficient. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-eight, Section eight, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Attorney Ryan Spitz of Counsel to Adams and Maranti with the business address of three-fifty West Broadway, South Boston. With me today is Donnie Garrity, the architect from O'Sullivan Architectural. And then also with me today is the owner, Ryan McGuire. As stated, this proposal is to erect a four-story, three-family dwelling with two ground-level parking spaces. Each unit sizes will range from approximately eleven-hundred-and-eighty-three square feet to twelve-hundred-and-forty-seven square feet and will consist of a two-bed, two-bath, open-floor plan kitchen along with a den slash office nook and a small balcony for outdoor space. The height of the building will be forty feet, forty-four feet in height. As you can see from page four of the drawings, the, the roof line is consistent with that of the, the neighborhood in the street. And as you can see there from the little brown sections there, it actually will be lower than the three properties to the right of it. FAR here is being proposed at a two-point-three-five. Front yard is a, is a three-foot setback, but, which is consistent along with the property lines on this street as well. And side yard from the left of the property is one foot and on the right of the property is a three-foot setback. And then the rear yard is an eleven-foot setback. At this time, I'll open it up for any questions.
And so you, is there any roof deck proposed?
No, there originally was a roof deck, Madam Chair, on there. But going through the community process, we removed the actual roof deck from, from the proposal, the plans. And it's notated within this set of drawings that you do have.
And I'm assuming that there is no occupancy in the lower level because of the flood hazard district?
Correct, so that is there, that's just gonna be for the two, uh, the two-car parking on that first ground level as well as mechanicals and as well as some trash recycling storage area.
And tell us about the parking?
So there's, there, there's two parking spaces on this ground level, eight foot by eighteen feet.
And those are indoor, outdoor, what are they?
Indoor parking, Madam Chair.
Okay, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. No more question. I, I, I do think it does extend further into the rear lot than some of the adjacent buildings, but I think the height is consistent with the, the adjacent building as outlined by the proponent. No real questions about the proposal, thanks.
Any questions from the board? Mr. Spitz, how far is it, talking about the rear yard? How far is the proposed building from the rear abutter?
From the rear abutter? I, I'm not quite sure, maybe Donnie Garrity, the architect who is logged online, he can give us a little bit more information. I know there's an eleven-foot setback from the property.
We just want to make sure that the abutter does not feel cramped.
We, um, we've reached out, we've worked together with all the abutters during the process. We have, on record, we do have fourteen letters of support from the abutters as well.
Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chairman, members of the board, Haley Dillon, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. Like their attorney, Ryan Spitz, said, they do have letters of support. We've received no letters of opposition, but we would like to defer to the board, thank you.
Good morning, Madam of the Board. Anna Calderon from Council President Sling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on feedback from neighbors and the City Side Neighborhood Association due to a good community process and compromises on both sides. These compromises included-
Hold on, can everybody please mute themselves and give us the courtesy of hearing from Anna? Go ahead, Anna, please finish.
These compromises included removal of roof decks to address quality of life concerns from the neighbors and civic group, which gained city side support. We respectfully ask that the proponent continue to work closely with neighbors on any quality of life issues during the construction phase. Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Madam Chair, sorry, Secretary here, we do have letters of support and we also have four letters of opposition.
And what's the opposition based on?
Size, height of the project, parking.
Okay. May I have a motion, please?
Make a motion to approve a BPDA designer view.
Second, secondly-
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling DOA one-two-seven-nine-zero-four-five-one-eighty-one E Street. This is construct a new three-story, single-unit residential structure with first-level garage on a footprint of five-hundred-and-ten square feet. Violation is Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient lot size. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient lot width. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient lot width frontage. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, excessive FAR. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient open space. Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient side yard setback. And Article sixty-eight, Section eight, insufficient rear yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, Beth, are you on?
Hi, yeah, I'm on. Beth McDougall, I'm the architect for the project. So what we're proposing is a single-family home on the lot. The owner lives next door at one-seventy-seven E Street. And we have, we're proposing one, uh, car parking below. So the first floor is parking and canopled stairs to the upper floors. Second floor would have a kitchen with open space for living. And then the stairs would go up to a, a third floor. And the third floor would have two bedrooms with two bathrooms and a, like a laundry closet.
And what's the size of the occupancy, the occupancy of the two floors?
The two floors, the total is twelve-hundred-and-fifty-eight square feet.
Twelve-fifty-eight square feet, and is it true this lot is five-hundred-and-ten square feet?
The lot is seven-hundred-and-fifteen square feet.
And it's, it's a separately plotted lot from anything else, right?
Yes, it's an individual lot, yes.
And so it's seven-hundred-and-fifteen square feet and, and it's been in existence or was it recently subdivided?
No, it's been in existence.
Okay, and this parking is proposed for the unit?
Yes.
Okay, any roof deck proposed or what's the open space?
Uh, we did not propose a roof deck, I mean, we could. The open space would be the small backyard, but we did not propose a roof deck.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
The plans are fine in terms of the proposal, no real issue with the scope. But I don't understand exactly how it's fitting in the site. The adjacent abutting property has a series of windows on it as well as it appears to be the second means of egress that dumps out right against this building. So I'm just not sure that I understand exactly how it's all gonna work together. Feels like we're really slicing, putting something in, in, in a very small space. And I guess I just need to make sure I understand that relationship a little bit better.
Ms. McDougall, go ahead.
Okay, so on the, um, the egress for the building next door, which is the same owner-
Hold on one second, can you tell us which plan we should be looking at so we understand what page we should be looking at so we understand what's going on?
You go up to the site plan? That one, the second sheet, that one, if you can zoom in there, where it's red? Okay, so there is a, there's an easement, which is on both pieces of property, partially on one-seventy-seven and partially on our property here, one-eighty-one. And what it is, is a three-foot passageway, which is required for egress. So the door on the existing building that opens will go through that passageway. We are not encroaching on that three-foot passageway, we are holding back from that. So that would be the egress for that property. And what was the other question, I'm sorry?
Well, you don't show a curb cut in any of your plans or you, what's the street parking situation?
We would, we would be applying for a curb cut.
Is there parking on the side of the street, on street parking?
Yes, there is.
Okay, and just clarification, so the total width of that easement is three feet?
Yes.
From, from wall to wall?
Yes.
Wait, three feet on each property or three feet total?
We have, we are holding our building off three feet from, from the, so we are, if you look at the site plan there, we are, um, let me find the number here. Actually, we are one foot nine off the property line, our, our footprint. And then the rest of the three-foot easement is on one-seventy-seven. It's a shared easement, if you, if you look at the deeds, the easement is shared. And it's a three-foot passageway, which would allow the existing building to have its egress.
So, okay, so on the ground floor, there's three feet, but on the upper floor, you're actually cantilevering even closer to those adjacent windows in that building?
Yes, we were proposing to cantilever over a foot, a foot and eleven inches.
I don't know the answer to this, so how does that affect their?
Those windows, some of those, the windows are, I mean, the windows can remain. Our, our building has to be rated, so all the, all the, that wall that's next to them would be, end up being a two-hour fire rated wall. And some of those windows are, are within a stairwell.
Okay.
Excuse me, in that cantilevered area, there's ultimately one foot total between the two buildings, correct?
One second. No, there's a total of, yeah, let me just get my calculator on. Let's see.
It says there's a total of three foot and then you-
It's a foot and a half.
One foot eleven.
Yeah, it's a foot and a half, so our building, um, they have on their side, so the passageway is three feet. On our property sits one point nine, so they have one point one of passageway on their property. Okay, and then, so one point one they have, and then even with the cantilever, we're a half, half of a foot off of the property line. So they have a foot and a half from their building to our building.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions from the board?
Mr. Robinson, is that a problem, both in terms of code or, or not, not necessarily code violation, but just?
I mean, I, again, I'm not the architect of record for this. I, I think there is some issues here and I, and I guess I just don't understand the, the resolution of it from the standpoint of what the proponent is, is offering.
Well, let's get to the party and in the meantime, if you could, look at the BPDA's recommendation. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
We'd like to defer to the board for this, thank you.
Good morning, Madam of the Chairman, members of the board. Anna Calderon from Council President Sling's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on good community process and feedback from neighbors on the addition of this single-family proposal to the community. The meeting went well and the proponent has received a number of support letters. We respectfully ask that they continue to work closely with neighbors during the construction phase on any quality of life issues. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, we do have letters of support, but we also have letters of opposition.
Okay, Madam Chair, I do have a few raised hands. I'll start with Kathy. You've been requested to be unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Hi, Kathy?
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair and members of the board. I am-
Can you state your name and address for the record, Kathy?
Yes, Kathleen Muldowney, one-eighty-three, one-eighty-five E Street and a backyard, which is one-sixty-four West Ninth, which is the back of this proposed building.
So tell us, are you in support or are you in opposition?
I, um, I'm very concerned. Bill Davis and I have been neighbors for maybe thirty-five years. What he's building, the lot of land he's building on, I have the same lot on my side, so they have been open spaces. And I have lived in my home fifty-three years, so I, I do have some concerns. I didn't, was, I did call the architect, asking for a call to explain the, um, things like, um, the exhaust system or where the drainage was gonna go, where things is gonna be put into my yard. This building is a small building, which is why Mr. Davis has seven variances that he's asking for. I am concerned how the building is going to affect my property, especially where Mr. Davis wants to come right up to both of my property lines, the side yard and the rear yard.
Okay, thank you, thank you. May I have the next person, Miss Ambassador?
Sure, yep, Ryan, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please? Can you state your name and address for the record, please? I'll go to you, Bob.
Madam Chair, ladies, members of the board, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transification Department. And basically, I'd like to be opposed to the parking design because there's only one parking space and there's parking on this side. And it would require a curb cut which results in a private parking space. And we never approved that. So we're pressing a denial about the parking.
Thank you. Okay, and Ryan, go ahead. Are you looking at your testimony here?
Yep, good morning, Ryan Long, 1 Cotters Street. I just wanna go on record and support the project. It's a very reasonable proposal, given the neighborhood. If anyone went on-site and saw the neighborhood, this is a very low-key development compared to what's going on down there. And Bill's been an outstanding neighbor to myself and a lot of people. You know, that's why he has a lot of letters of support. And I think it's important to note that the property next door, I don't know, it might be just a Roma, but I heard it's, it might be up for sale, so there's something to note.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, I have to clarify it. Unfortunately, I looked at the wrong file. There was no, no letters of support or opposition on this particular case.
Um, excuse me? There's, there's 14 letters of, of support for this case. Hi, I'm sorry, this is Kelly Davis at 177 E Street Apartment 3. I'm Bill Davis's daughter. We actually-
No, hold, hold on, hold on. Ms. Ambassador, can you mute everybody because we are in, in a process of having a discussion with board members here? Okay, Mr. Hampton, please, is there a BPDA recommendation?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Jeff Hampton, Senior Zoning Planner for BPDA. We recommend a denial without prejudice. A couple of issues. Bob D'Amico had already spoken to a couple of points where the entire front yard would now have to be a curb cut. We're not really sure whether or not the light pole would have to be moved. It's right close to the property line. We're not really sure if that has to be moved or not. We feel that the project is too dense. And again, touching on what Bob had mentioned, now you're privatizing two on-street parking spots to put a curb cut right there for only one car. So where on the record is denial without prejudice?
Thank you. Okay, given all thus, all the information that we've received, may I have a motion, please?
Yeah, I'd like to make a motion for denial without prejudice. I agree with the BPDA analysis, both in parking and the density of the, the building.
Is there a second?
I can't already go to them.
I'll second that, Eric.
All, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, you guys, you guys just throw up 30 units across, excuse me, 49 units and you're gonna deny this? You guys are a bunch of shit.
Excuse me, hi, this is Kelly Davis, Bill Davis's daughter. Could we please-
We didn't have an opportunity to speak yet.
Can we please have a moment to speak?
No, there's a motion, it's carried, we're done. May I have the next project, please, Ms. Ambassador?
Yeah, very, very disrespectful, thank you.
Madam Chair, I need to go into the 10, it's now 10:43, so I'm gonna go to the 10:30 hearings. For any deferrals or withdrawals for 10:30, you can give me the address first.
Mr. Secretary, Mr. Secretary, Madam Chair, I, I oppose that motion. I wasn't able to, I wasn't able to speak in light of the, the noise.
Oh, okay, thank you. So for, for, to clarify, for 181 E, E Street, there were six members in support of the motion of denial without prejudice and one in opposition.
Correct, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Fortune, please, 10:30 cases?
Yes, I called the 10:30 hearings for any deferrals or withdrawals. Give me the address first, please. Is Canterbury Street on, 510 Canterbury Street? Well, they are requesting a deferral, Madam Chair, so I'll wait to see if they're here and then we'll go from that point.
Okay.
Thank you. I'm gonna call the next case at 9:30, calling DOA 121-0235, 1111 to 1113, Washington Street. This is a change of occupancy from two-family and 16 lodgers to two-family dwelling and 18 lodgers. Violation's Article 65, Section 41, off-street parking is insufficient. In Article 9, Section 1, extension of a non-conforming use. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacass, Lacass Law, 75 Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the property owner and the applicant. And with me is Brad Chambers, one of the principals of the owner. This is a proposal to expand the non-conforming use of this rooming house, this lodging house, which has been a lodging house since 1978. So it has a 44-year history at this address. Changed the occupancy from a two-family and 16 lodgers to a two-family and 18 lodgers. So the net effect is that with some reconfiguration of the existing space in the interior of the building, we're adding two additional single-room occupancies to increase the lodging occupancy from 16 to 18. The two, two-bedroom apartments will remain at the ground floor on each side of the building. These are the floor plans.
Hold on, Mr. Lacass, how long, so the 16 lodgers have been in place since 1978?
Yes.
Or was there any intermediate request for change of occupancy?
Nope, the, the occupancy established as two, two-family and 16 lodgers has been in place since 1978.
78, okay, got it. So tell us how your, how it's proposed to accommodate the two additional lodgers?
Yep, so again, some, some slight reconfiguration of existing rooms. But as shown on the plans, the basement level, which is a full walkout condition on one side and large windows on all the other sides, there are six single-room occupancies in the basement, two baths, a kitchen, and an activity room. On the ground level of the building are the two, two-bedroom apartments and a small office for the on-site property manager. And, and no single-room occupancy on the ground floor. On the second floor of the building, there are eight rooms, two kitchens and two baths. And then on the third floor, there are four rooms, one kitchen and one bath. So that brings the total to 18 rooms and the two, two-bedroom apartments of ground floor. The salvation is a good understanding of how essentially it looks like. It's, you know, two, two-family, it reads as such. What's left is right. So on the ground floor, the left-hand side is a mirrored image of the right-hand side and that's where the two, two-bedroom apartments are.
What are, what are the sizes of the, of the units? Bedroom, the two bedrooms?
The two bedrooms are, Brad, do you have that? They're approximately 1,200 square feet each. Yeah.
And tell us the bedroom sizes of the, of the-
The single occupancies?
Yes, of the SOLOs.
So the, the average is about 150. Some are slightly smaller and some are larger than that. In terms of the zoning relief that is sought, one is a conditionally used permit for extension of the non-conforming use of the lodging house as a non-conforming use in this sub-district. So we seek a conditionally used permit for that. We were cited for insufficient parking. However, the site plan does show that we have at least 11 parking spaces.
Now, hold on, Mr. Lacass, you know, we, we are really concerned about health, welfare, et cetera of residents.
Yeah.
So tell us again how and where those two additional rooms are being proposed?
Yep, Brad, could you chime in on that?
Yes, how you doing? Thank you, board, for hearing, seeing us today. The 18 lodging rooms exist to date and have been changed. We don't particularly know why it was zoned as a two-family, 16 loders. We are not doing any movement of any walls to recreate the rooms they already exist as is today. Would it now-
Okay, so you're looking to legalize it. Okay, thank you. Okay, hold on a minute. Mr. Robinson?
Yes.
Are you comfortable, or maybe I should ask you technically, the, the rooms in the basement, tell us about those.
Yeah, so I did, I was a little nervous about that as well. Not super familiar with this location, but I, I did go by and, you know, the, the site is stepped down. And the, the windows do appear to be full-height windows. Obviously can't tell exactly the sill, the height and condition. But, you know, I think it's a well-maintained property. And it looks like, you know, since they're not really changing any configuration in terms of the, the smaller units, I, I didn't see any sort of cause for concern with this proposal.
And all, all second means, all means of egresses are not through units, right?
Yes, Madam Chair, and we do have our current certificate of inspection from ISD as well as our current lodging house license from the, from the licensing board. And both are in place for the 16 lodgers and the two, two-family units. Those are in place.
Yeah, because we have seen second means of egresses through people's bedrooms. Okay, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Hi, yes, hello, Dante Peoples here, in the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services. This proposal went through an extensive community process. Butters meeting was held by the Mayor's Office and Neighborhood Services on November 8th. The applicant then met with the River Street Civic Association on January 13th, then also met with the, not the River Street, the, excuse me.
Lower Mill Civic, Dante.
Oh, I apologize. The Lower Mill Civic on February 15th, 2022, where support was shown by Butters and the associations. All questions and concerns were addressed. A no major opposition was out voiced during the community process. Also, there should be a, a support letter from the Lower Mill Civic Association. At this time, we would like to defer to the board for your judgment. Thank you so much.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner, on behalf of City Council, Brian Worrell. We would like to bone record in support.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have the letters that the Mayor's Office spoke of and a couple of other support letters.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you so much.
Calling the next case, calling DOA 126-8328-9 Fockwall Street. This is demolition of an existing deck and stairs in the rear yard to construct a new three-level deck and stairs. Violation's Article 67, Section 9, side yards insufficient. In Article 67, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Allison and Lockstone Ellis, 9 Fockwall Street, Roseland, Delmas.
So please tell us what you're proposing.
We're proposing just basically more living space. So in the summertime, we can enjoy some of the weather out there. We live on the second and the third floor, so we're looking for three levels. Again, you know, we live on the second and the third floor, so we're hoping to build a deck so we can enjoy some of the, the scene.
Oh, tell us, is this a two-family dwelling then?
It's a two, it's a two-family dwelling for sure.
Okay, and tell us about-
Again, we live on the second and the third.
Got it. Tell us about the dimensions of the decks.
Uh, daytime, it goes from 24, 24.3 feet to 12 feet wide, 12 feet deep. So that's what it is. Both the neighbors on the side, the spilanes, and the neighbors in the back, Longfellow, have given it-
Tell us, tell us about the distance from the, the post in the rear to your property line?
Oh, that's about seven feet from the, I think, I think it's, I think it could be seven feet. I'm not sure on that one, that's what's holding it up on that side. And then on the side is three feet, I believe.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. Actually, per the survey, it says the decks are 28 feet back from the rear property line.
Oh, yeah, you're right, you're right. But I was looking from the garage. I just thought-
Ah, yeah, um, no, that's your garage, seven feet.
What you're looking at, you know what I'm saying? But we have the feet-
Okay, hold on, hold on, sir. So, Mr. Robinson, it's 28 feet from the rear property line?
Correct, yep.
Okay, any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Guzhu Noci. I am the Roseland Liaison with the Mayor's Office. Allison and Jackson Ellis completed the community process. They had one letter of support from a director of Butters and one letter of support from the Cozes Neighbor Association, which is the Longfellow Neighbor Association. And we would like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, secretary here, we do have that one letter from a neighbor. We don't have that other letter from Longfellow.
Yeah, I think it came by email. Anybody else?
Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, good luck.
Thank you.
Sorry, calling the last case at 9:30, calling DOA 118-3174, 103 to 105 Hooker Street. This city erect a new three-family house, rear decks. Existing house to be razed. Violation's Article 51, Section 56, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 51, Section 57.2, conformity with an existing building alignment. Article 51, Section 8, the use is forbidden. Article 51, Section 9, the foyer ratio is excessive. And Article 51, Section 9, the building height is excessive in stories. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, or good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Pugini, 10 Fourth Road in Branch, on behalf of the applicant. I'll just run through briefly, 103, 105 Hooker Street in Austin. The zoning in this neighborhood is 2F 5,000. The lot size is 5,650 square feet. The proposal is to build a new three-family in a place where an existing three-family was destroyed by fire in August of 2020. We will provide full fire protection and then we will have four off-street parking spaces located to the rear of the building through an existing curb cut. I'll touch on the violations, use-
So, Mr. Pugini, so this building was destroyed by fire?
Yes.
So how has it changed from the original building? Because that should have been allowed to be reconstructed as a grade.
Well, it's, it's a great question. So the original building that was assessed as a three-family by the city for, I think, about 20 years had a basement unit, Madam Chair. And as you all know, you know, hearing before you guys all the time, you know, basement units not looked on fondly on by this board. And as a result, they raised it to have three units above grade.
Okay, and tell us about those three units, bed and count size?
Yes, unit one is three-bed. They're all the same, they're all, unit one, two, and three are all three-bed, 1,220 square feet. The basement's unfinished, will have a half-bath and a mop sink and mechanicals located in it. And although this does not affect zoning, we heard through the community process that the Davids were somewhat concerned about having a three-bed, three-bath type units. So we've agreed to amend that to make it a two, but even though, again, it does affect zoning, but there will be two baths, we would suggest that that would be a proviso from this board. And we're also signing a agreement not to redoubt underwriting.
Okay, I mean, that's, that's an interesting thing because we have been seeing a huge number of baths going with these units. Okay, so there's no roof deck being proposed?
No.
And is it, is one of those units accessible?
Yes, it is.
And tell us about those decks, the rear decks?
Uh, the rear decks, a 12-by-6 that sit off the back of the house.
And tell us about the parking?
So the parking is gonna go through an existing curb cut, Madam Chair. Previously, there was, there were three tandem spaces associated with the previous three-family. So this will provide four parking spaces that'll be in the rear of the building.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. I think, you know, it does meet the side yard setback. I think, you know, at first glance, it, it's a little different because it's a flat roof style and the rest of the street is pitch roof, which was the existing building. So I think it feels a little bit bigger, but I think in terms of the proposed, I think it'll work with the street. So no real questions on the proposal.
Any questions from the board? Is any-
Yeah, yeah, I just, I, I, I got a question. I, I'm just curious, why didn't the architect go with like a pitch roof for dorms to, to try to keep it somewhat the same? Because it is very different-
Yep.
-than the rest of the houses.
Because it is very different than the rest of the houses on the street.
Yeah, Mr. Ruggiero, that's a good question. I'm aware at 31 feet, so through design review, we could possibly correct that. I mean, this will be subject to be designed.
Yeah, I was, I was gonna ask the same question, this Mr. Ruggiero. The footprint is identical?
Um, no, it's bigger. It's a little, the building is pushed back. The previous building was closer to the street and it's pushed back a little bit on the rear side of it. But again, we have no rear yard violation or anything like that. We have marginal FAR violations, so it's, it fits into the building. And there's also a three-family to the left instead.
Okay.
Is there-
I would agree with Mr. Ruggiero's comment.
Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer judgment to the board. Background information on the community process. Mayor's Office held a Butters meeting on June 2nd. Since then, we received 27 letters of support, the majority of which are from the immediate North Austin neighborhood, as well as nine letters in opposition citing concerns about the density on the dead-end portion of Hooker, as well as concerns about the architectural features not fitting in with the existing characteristics of other homes on the street. They also went to the All-Civic Association and through that process, made reductions in the proposed bathroom count and also pledged to not rent to undergraduate students. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have those letters that Mr. Newman spoke of in the Mayor's Office. Support and opposition.
Thank you.
And Madam Chair, I do have a few raised hands here. I'll start with Mary. You've been unmuted. Can you state your name with a lower hand? Oh, Mary, can you, are you looking to give testimony here? One second.
I just unmuted. Yeah, my name is Mary Ann O'Loughlin. I live at 106, 108 Hooker Street, where I'm the owner. I am exactly opposite the property that is developed, for which the development is being proposed. I oppose this proposal because the, because there's really no reason to have any variances, I believe, to, to replace or rebuild a perfectly profitable building in the place of the one that was there. And my biggest concern, which I share with the other people from the street, is actually the traffic. We have a lovely little park at the end of the street. It's a dead-end street. We have many children that come up and down the street to enjoy the park. We already have residential parking, which is full on the street. So adding all of these cars, which is potentially with the nine bedrooms, nine more cars or even 18 more cars, is, presents a danger for the neighborhood. And again, for the aesthetics, it seems a shame to put up a sort of a building that is completely incompatible with the architecture of the street. There are only seven, five, sorry, nine buildings on the street. All the rest of them are pitch roofs with porches.
Thank you. Can I ask the other people who have raised hands who are going to give testimony to please give us new information? Either in support or in opposition, please go ahead.
Okay, Anthony, sorry, go ahead.
Yes, good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Tony Disidoro, representing the Austin Civic Association. In terms of our membership, the proponents were very responsive to the concerns raised early on in the, in the community review process. They have pretty much done everything that was asked of them. Yes, the architectural issue was raised about how the new building would assimilate into the existing neighborhood. But basically, on balance, the ACA is in support of this project.
Thank you. John, are you looking to give testimony here? I see your hand is raised.
Yes, I think that's me.
Okay, yep. Okay, yes, okay, sorry. Okay, so we're all set. I have no additional raising.
Let's see, Mr., Mr. Hampton?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I believe you recommended approval with design review?
Okay, thank you.
Yes, we did. Sorry about that.
No worries. May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with heavy BP data design review on the roof and trying to make this a pitch roof to look like the rest of the street.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second, second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Madam Chair, would you like me to go right to the 10:30?
Uh, let's see, it's 11:05. Let's take a 10-minute break and we convene at 11:15.
Very well.
Thank you.
Recording stopped.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm going to call the, for anybody who wasn't on the call for 10:30, any deferrals or withdrawals for the 10:30 cases. If you can give me the address first, please?
I see Mr. Green has put a number of notes in the-
Is this 510 Canterbury, Madam Chair?
It looks like it has, yes. One, yes, he has put, he's requesting a deferral.
Okay, so I'm going to call in for the record, calling case BOA 121-5510, 510 Canterbury Street.
May I have a motion for deferral?
I'll make a motion to deferral.
Is there a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The date, please?
They'll have, he has the last date on May, on April 5th at 11:30. We're now into, I'm sorry, tail end of April and then into May. So, April 5th at 11:30.
I'm assuming that's enough time, but let's, yes, let's do that. Okay.
Okay. I take it there are no other withdrawals or deferrals for the 10:30? I'll go right to the first two cases, calling BOA 128-2574, 14 Holyoke Street. There is a companion case for building code, case BOA 128-2563, 14 Holyoke Street. This is to add two tandem parking spaces at a deck balcony and the rear of the third floor and roof deck and related access hatch. A violation of Article 64, Section 36, off-street parking and loading. Article 64, Section 9.4, townhouse row house extension. And this is for the building code. This is the ninth edition 780 CMR 1011 stairways, 1011.12.2 roof access, where a stairway is provided to a roof. Access to that roof shall be provided through a penthouse compliant with Section 15 10.2 point. Madam Chair, I do have a letter here from Boston Water and Sewer, but it's not being, it's not a violation, so I don't know if Christian was on. Maybe he could clarify for us? But name and address for the record, please. Is Mr. Hassan on? What, somebody from guys for Holyoke?
Don't see the name. Oh, one second, there is a hand raised. Is it Pedro Lucas? One second. Pedro Lucas, are you here for this proposal?
Yes, I am.
Okay, go ahead.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is Pedro Lucas from Zephyr Architects, address 315 A Street. We are, sorry, let me just join the panelists.
Mr. Lucas, the first thing we usually do is address the, the building code violation. So can you please speak to that? How is access proposed to be provided to the roof? Mr. Lucas, are you still on?
Yes, sorry. Sorry, I had some technical difficulties there. Let me start over. So we are here requesting a zoning variance for the rear deck and a building code variance for a roof access hatch. The rear deck will project six feet from the building and follows the shape of the rear bay.
You might not have heard me, but usually we look at the building code violation first.
Okay.
So you're confirming for the record that you are proposing access to the roof deck through a hatch?
Yes.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so let's go to the tandem parking and the balconies. Please talk, tell us about what's being proposed.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So, we are proposing a rear deck that will project six feet from the building. It follows the shape of the rear bay. It will be accessible to Unit 2 off of the parlor level kitchen. Additionally, as you've mentioned, we've been cited with a design and maneuverability violation due to the two tandem parking spots. Through our discussions with the neighborhood, we will not be requesting or requiring a variance for the two additional tandem spots. We are proposing to replace those with additional green space for Unit 1.
Okay, so the tandem parking is off. Okay, and then tell us about the roof deck. What is the dimension of the roof deck and is it visible from the street?
The roof deck is not visible from the street. Let me pull the dimensions of that right now. Roof deck is 350 square feet.
Okay. And tell us how the balconies will be attached to the building?
We will be attaching those with a ledger on-
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. The balcony is bracket attached. And there is an updated set of plans that do show the removal of the tandem parking and introduction of a landscaped area buffer between the sort of lower-level patio space and that first set of parking spots. But no, no questions for me.
Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Hi, yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Kim Crisilli from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office holding a Butters meeting where support was shown by the Butters. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. We do have a few letters of support.
Madam Chair, I do have a raised hand. For Ken, you've been unmuted. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello, good morning, board. Thank you very much. I appreciate your holding these hearings by Zoom because it's possible for some of us to attend that might otherwise have a hard time doing so. And I think that we're trying to, the neighbors are trying to learn how to manipulate your system so that we can actually report it. And I appreciate the fact that you're doing that. I'm an immediate Butter at number 12 Holyoke Street. I've lived there for 56 years. I have found the developer to be quite cooperative and thoughtful about the work that he's extorted me, so I want to mention appreciation for that. My support is conditional upon the removal of the application for the extra two spaces. And so, since he has clearly stated that, that's included in the plans and the way you will be approving the, the roof deck and the balcony, I give full support to the proposal that proceed without the two apartment.
Thank you. Can you put your name and address on the record, please?
Yes, I'm Kenneth Crookemeyer. My address is number 12 Holyoke Street, Boston, Massachusetts.
Thank you. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with the proviso that there is only two parking spaces provided and the tandem parking violation will be denied.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA 129-0222, 7 City Point Court. There's a companion case, BOA 129-0228, 9 City Point Court. This is for 7 City Point Court. Erecting new attached four-story four-residential building on a subdivided lot. Violation Article 68, Section 33, off-street parking requirement. Article 68, Section 34.1, conforming with the existing building alignment. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the rear yard is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. This is for 9 City Point Court. Combine 9 City Point Court with 7 City Point Court and re-subdivide proposed 9 City Point Court to contain 1,181 square feet and 7 City Point Court to contain 2,382 square feet, .5 square feet. And change use from a three-family to a two-family. A violation is Article 68, Section 35, non-conforming with dimensional regulate requirements. Article 68, Section 8, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 68, Section 8, the usable open space is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the side yard is insufficient. Article 68, Section 8, the lot area is insufficient. And Article 68, Section 8, the additional lot area is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My name is George Moranci. I'm an attorney with the business address 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Madam Chair, members, I represent Peter and Kelly Lyden, the owners of the property, who also reside at 11 City Point Court. What is being proposed here is to take down a small, connected colonial-style building with two units at 7-9 City Point Court and replace it with a new four-story, four-family building, per net increase of two units over existing. With the subdivision and reconsolidation, the lot size here would be 2,382 square feet. No off-street parking would be provided, only two site conditions and the desire to keep the building at a zoning compliant 40-foot height. FAR would be 3.37. The building would consist of four floor-through units. Unit 1 would be a two-bedroom unit. And Units 2, 3, and 4 would each be three-bedroom units. All units would be approximately 1,100 square feet. Unit 1 would have family room space in the basement, but no bedrooms, but it would still include two window well egress points, as well as a lift to provide family room access for anyone with a disability living in that unit. There's no roof deck or decks, private or otherwise. A headhouse is shown on the plans for roof access, but as I say, the roof would be unoccupied. And I, of course, understand this board's position on headhouses. With that, I'll stop and take any questions that any members may have.
So I'm, I'm still trying to understand, so at seven, so how many units at 7 and 9? Is it a total of four plus two? Or is it a total of four units?
It's a little bit confusing, I admit, the way that the refusal letters are written. The best way to understand it is there is an existing four-story building where my clients live with two units in it at 11 City Point Court. That building is connected to 7 and 9. Specifically, it's connected to 9 City Point Court. And because it's connected and sitting on a single lot, that building has a legal occupancy of three units. Two in the building there at the far end on the right. Two units in that, two bi-level units where my clients live. And then the blue building, which is connected to it, is one, two side-by-side units. So the, the new building is actually legally combined with the blue unit on its right. That whole blue building will be demolished. So that occupancy of three units includes one of the buildings, one unit in the building to be demolished. So that three-family, legal three-family becomes a two-family because it has only two units. Then, the, the smaller blue building, colonial-style with pitch roof, that is to be demolished. There's a subdivision and reconsolidation of the lots, so that the existing building will sit on its own lot. The new building, which would replace these two side-by-side units, would be a four-unit building. So if you were to think of it as simply knocking down the two units in the blue building, that becomes a four-story, four-family. Nothing changes to the building in the background, which is a four-unit, sorry, a four-story, two-family.
I'm still confused. Because I see two blue buildings, so...
Yeah, so the blue is, I guess...
And I see a truck in there, so basically, what's happening to the space where the truck is? Is that going?
No, that is remaining. So, there are two, if we go back up to that view down City Point Court, I'll try to explain a little bit better. There are two blue buildings. Each one of them has two units.
Okay, who is, who's running the slides today? Can you please, yes, please back up to this. Excellent.
The two-story building in the immediate foreground to the right, nothing is changing there. Nothing is changing in that area where the truck is parked, which is parking for somebody else. In the back, there is basically an identical blue building. That is actually two units. That is to be demolished and in its place and on that footprint is to be erected a new four-unit building. So, basically, that, those two units at two stories goes to a four-unit building at four stories, which will match the building in the background, which is where my clients currently live. And that small side projection, that deck that is projecting off the right side of that building would, of course, be removed because the building is going up, you know, connected to the building on the left. So, again, the building in the rear, two units, four stories. The new building, four units, four stories on the seven and nine City Point Court lot, plus a little bit of the eleven City Point Court lot, where it's connected to the lot size here, becomes two thousand three hundred eighty-two square feet.
So, the beige building in the background will be connected to the building that's supposed to be demolished?
Correct.
For a total of, combined total of four units?
Four units where the blue building currently stands. The only thing that's happening in the beige building in the rear where my clients live is they will be, you know, losing some of the, you know, their walkout deck on the side that will be taken off to allow for the new structure to go up. Occupancy in that building is remaining as is, as two families. So, the only building that's changing is the blue building in the background.
Okay, and then, what is the distance between the proposed blue building and the beige building?
They'll be connected, so wall openings would be closed because they are connected. They are basically connected now because that is, I had to explain it. The unit on the left of that blue building is actually legally part of the beige building, which is why one of the refusal letters says change occupancy from a three to a two. Once that blue building is demolished, then that existing two-unit building just gets a legal occupancy as a two-F and, you know, the balcony has to be closed and those windows locked. And again, that's where my clients live, so they're fully aware of that impact.
So, for all intents and purposes, then, the bulk of the project that we're looking at, then, is seven City Point Court, four units?
Correct, five-seven. Sorry to interrupt. Five-seven for four units, correct.
And the zoning district is an MFR, so the use is permitted?
Correct.
And then, I'm assuming that everything calls out conforming with building code with modal? How is usable open space going to be provided?
There's no roof deck for, you know, reasons I think are clear to the board. Not something that's particularly popular. This, in South Boston, this location, this is at O and East First Street. So, one block up is P Street and then it's Marine Park. So, there's abundant open space between Marine Park and Castle Island with an easy walking distance, as well as Greenbelt Broadway of Dave Boulevard. And in terms of height and massing, the proposed building is consistent in size, massing, and setbacks with eleven City Point Court, as I mentioned, which was approved by this board in September of two thousand thirteen. In fact, it's more consistent with this MFR zoning sub-district than the existing structure to be replaced. There's a slightly greater front yard setback than at eleven City Point Court. There's the same rear yard setback with a zoning compliant three-foot setback on the right side of the building. And as I say, a net increase of two units, essentially by means of vertical growth within the maximum height limit under zoning.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I appreciate that. It was confusing at first pass. I think my only real concern is the rear yard relationship between the proposed new massing and the rear yards of O Street in terms of, there's just quite tight proximity. But I assume we'll hear about the Butters and that relationship. But no other questions. And eleven, or maybe I got it wrong, nine and eleven, they are reconfiguring to take care of any building code issues on a shared property line at that point. So, it's complicated, but no other questions. We signed the rear yard setback in my mind.
Thank you. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Hi, Madam Chair, members of the board. Healy Tilden, Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. We've received nothing but over thirty letters of support for this project and all directed Butters have shown support, but we would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board, and I, Calderon, from Council President's office. The councilor would like to go on record in support based on a good community process, positive about our meeting and feedback from neighbors. We respectfully request that the proponent continue to work closely with the community during the construction phase on any quality of life issues. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, here we do have those letters of support that the mayor's office spoke of, but we also have one letter of opposition just opposed to the project in general.
Okay. And I have a few raised hands. I'll start with mine.
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. My appearance with the carpenters union would like to go on record as part of this proposal.
And Tom Tinlin? I'm sorry. Yep. Sent a request to unmute you. Can you state your name and address for the record, please, Tom?
Yes, good morning. My name is Tom Tinlin. I live at three ninety-five East Fifth Street in South Boston. Born and raised and lifelong South Bostonian. Madam Chair, members of the board, I enthusiastically support this project and I do just want to, you know, caveat the why. The Lyden family have been part of South Boston, quite frankly, since there has been a South Boston. Like many of us, we have seen far too many members of our family no longer be able to live in our community, which is sad, but which is true. We're a victim of our own success. What Peter and Kelly Lyden are looking to do here is bring the Lyden family into a building that will allow them to stay in perpetuity. This is not a money grab, as we've seen some developers, and I'm not knocking anybody for making a buck. But having said that, you know, the Lyden family, they were raised by a single mother in a time when that was, you know, probably, you know, I don't want to disparage anybody, but it's just extremely difficult.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Tinlin.
I wanted to say, I would just, you know, appreciate the board taking that into account as we talk about affordable housing and the continuity of neighborhood. This is one of those really unique opportunities in which to do just that by your action today. Thank you.
Ms. Ambassador?
Sorry, I know there was another raised hand, but it looks like it went down. If anyone else is looking to give testimony here, let me know. Otherwise, I have no additional raised hands at the moment. Yeah, I think I'll say.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPA design review. Second, we can have a proviso just to focus a little bit on the rear yard setback. I know that'd be helpful. Thank you.
Okay.
That's fine.
Is there a second? There was a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-six-two-eight-five-one-sixty-eight Day Street. This is a change of occupancy from a two-family and charge to a three-family and renovate the first floor unit. No work to be done on the upper two units, exterior of the building or site. Violations Article fifty-five, Section forty, off-street parking and loading. Article fifty-five, Section nine, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article fifty-five, Section nine, usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good morning, Madam Chair. I need to recuse myself on this matter.
I'm sorry. Is that Mr. Lyden?
Yes, I'm recusing myself on this matter.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
Madam Chairman of the board, Don Wees with the Dane Torpey Firm, seven forty-five Atlantic Avenue. With me is Jacob Simmons from Proponent, or actually affiliate of the Proponent City Realty Group. We are before you this morning with an approximately hundred-twenty-year-old three-family structure, has mansard roof, is a handsome structure at the quarter of Day and Creighton in the Hyde Square area to make a plan. Throughout the hundred-twenty years of this building's existence, it has alternated between being kind of a standard three-family and for decades at a time, having a commercial use in the ground floor. The most recent ground floor use has been as a small house of worship. Most of the surrounding context is residential, although directly diagonally across the street is a multifamily building with a neighborhood store in the ground floor. But almost everything else around us is entirely residential. What we've proposed to do is to convert that ground floor house of worship space to an approximately twelve-sixty-square-foot, three-bedroom, two-bath, bright, sunny, modern apartment. The rest of the building exterior has been rehabbed. It's a good-looking, high-quality building today. The only change is changing to that allowed use. We're before you because it's a corner lot, there's no space for parking. There never has been parking on the site, but parking is a flag violation with the change of use. There's also insufficient usable open space on the lots and the lot area for dwelling is also slightly under. It is just a historic grandfathered undersized lot.
Okay, and what's the zoning district here?
It's a three F four thousand, Madam Chair, and the lot area here is three thousand one hundred twenty-two square feet, so it's a touch under what would be allowed today.
Oh, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. No real questions. Just want to make sure I understand, so that this, it looks like the second access point, which is to the right of the main front door, that's existing, correct?
That, yes, that's correct.
Okay. No other questions?
Okay. Any questions, board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board. Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services. At this time, the Mayor's Office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Some background information on the community process. The Mayor's Office held in the Butters meeting on November twenty-third, two thousand twenty-one, which was lightly attended by members of the community. At this time, our office does not have any letters of opposition or support. We did receive a support from the Jamaica Plain Neighborhood Council zoning supplement. That being said, we'll defer back to the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, here we do have that one letter that the mayor's office just spoke of.
Okay. Ms. Ambassador?
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're all set. Good luck.
Thank you very much.
Calling the next case, calling BOA one-two-zero-three-two-seven-zero, eleven Althea Street. This is to construct a rooftop deck and create stair access from that rear porch. The violation is Article sixty-five, Section nine, the building height is excessive in feet. Article sixty-five, Section nine, the side yard is insufficient. And Article sixty-five, Section nine, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please. Is Ms. Linzer on? Sarah Linzer? Oh, someone for Althea?
Taylor, one second. Taylor, you've been unmuted. Are you here for this case?
I am here for this case. Can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. Taylor Ferguson, contractor of record, two forty East Eighth Street. This proposal is in regards to a roof deck at eleven Althea Street. We're looking for relief from the building height that is excessive with regard to a pergola that is proposed for the roof deck and relief from the side yard and rear yard setbacks.
Okay, so please talk us through this. First of all, this rooftop deck would be accessible to all units or just the top unit?
Nope, this would be accessible to Sarah Linzer only. This is from her rear porch access. We'd be building stairs onto her roof and it would solely be for her use only.
And this is a three-family?
Correct.
And what's the zoning district?
Not a hundred percent sure of that off the top of my head.
Madam Chair, it's three F five thousand.
Thank you. So, okay, so tell us about that, the rear porch. So, tell us about the roof deck. Give us more information.
Yep, so the roof deck is proposed with a pressure-treated frame and composite decking along with a pergola to provide some privacy to allow Sarah to enjoy the outside space a little bit further. It will have a fence design around it to limit, you know, viewing within to the deck as well. Other than that, it is a pretty...
Because, so, can we, tell us what page we should be looking at to see what that pergola might look like? Oh, there it is.
Yep, so there's a picture on page seven in regards to what that pergola would potentially look like.
Is that, I mean, but for the fact that it's, you know, two, possibly three season, it's almost adding us another floor up there, right? What's the height of that pergola?
That pergola is...
It's shown at eight foot eight and a half above the roof.
Eight foot eight, okay, and is that a solid wall that I see the whiteboard at the bottom?
So, that will not actually be a wall. We're still working through design. It'll be more of a fence style, similar to the spaced-out decking that is, you can see above that. That is more going to be the style of which she'll have.
And did you check out any other options besides a heavily fenced pergola?
This was the design that was put together between Sarah and the architect team. So, that's what they wanted to go with.
Okay. And how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine. The rear decks do exist, so they're just extending another flight to the roof. But I think your points are well-taken in terms of how solid it is and feels almost as an additional room, so I think it should be taken under consideration.
Thank you. Is any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition to this proposal?
Yes. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Nguyen with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held in the Butters meeting for the proposal in November two thousand twenty-one. No Butters were in opposition and the St. Mark's Area Civic Association issued a letter of support. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary, we have that one letter of support from St. Mark's Association.
And Madam Chair, I have no raised hands at the moment.
Okay. Given that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with a BPA design review for the roof structure and the porosity of the walls.
I'll second that.
Just a question on that. Are you suggesting, I mean, I would support that if the roof structure was eliminated. It was just a roof deck, but that's not what you're suggesting, Mr. Robinson? No, I guess I understand the desire for some shade. I just think it feels like a room up there, so I think we want to remove that. So, I'm okay if there's an open air pergola up there with some shade coverage, but I just think it feels a little bit too much like an extension of a building.
So, make it look like a pergola?
Make it look more like a pergola than a solid room.
Okay.
Okay, now that we have definition of pergola in place. So, there's obviously a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye. I'm opposed.
Who's opposed? Mark? Okay, motion carries. Next case, next case, Mr. Washington?
I just got a mute. Calling this case, calling BOA one-two...
Calling this case, calling BOA 1267998, 4021 to 4025 Washington Street. This is to combine two lots into a newly created single lot to be 4,185 square feet. A change of auction barber shop, nail salon, restaurant, and takeout, two beauty salons, one office, one restaurant with takeout, and 14 residential units. The existing building will remain with three tenant spaces. Proposed to construct a new three-story vertical addition on the top of the existing building and a four-story addition alongside the existing building. The violation is Article 67, Section 32, off-street parking is sufficient. Article 67, Section 12, the floor-to-air ratio is excessive. Article 67, Section 12, the building height is excessive. Article 67, Section 12, front yard setback is insufficient. Article 67, Section 12, the side yard setback is insufficient. And Article 67, Section 12, the rear yard setback is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
So Ward is on, you've been unmuted. Ward, can you hear me? I sent a request to unmute you. Was anyone else speaking on your behalf?
Yes, yes, I'm unmuted.
Go ahead.
I think speaking on our behalf will be Dennis Quilty, our legal counsel, and Matthew Frankie are, are protected, so I'm going to--
Panelists giving me some issues, but I just sent a request to unmute Dennis.
Okay, great. So Dennis, you will be speaking on our behalf.
Am I in?
Yes.
Okay, great, thank you, sorry, I was trying to raise my hand, I couldn't get in otherwise. Thank you, thank you very much. Mr. Jaros is here as the owner's representative, my name is Dennis Quilty, attorney representing. The property owner with us is Matthew Frankie, the project architect. The project is, as suggested, to combine two lots. We would, we seek to maintain the neighborhood retail uses which are in the space presently and add 14 units of housing on the two combined lots. This is a transit-friendly development, being extremely close to multiple bus lines, Blue Bike stations, and within .7 miles of the Forest Hills T Station, and close proximity to commuter rail as well.
So Mr. Quilty, please talk to us about the project. Tell us what's being proposed.
What's being proposed is a residential development on top of the existing retail. 14 units on the two combined lots. So the existing building to the left of the, um, set of plans, if you will, gets an addition above the retail spaces which are rebuilt, and then those businesses are moving back in. And it's added to the space next door, the vacant space next door, which also has an addition, and that's where the 14 units are comprised in the addition area. The, um, having gone through, we met with Counselor Arroyo and his staff.
Oh, Mr. Quilty, we'll hear all of that from Neighborhood Services. What we need to do is, you know, for you to bring your expertise. So tell us what is the existing restaurant, or is there a new restaurant with takeout proposed for the space?
In the existing space, there is a restaurant, a barber shop, I forget what the other-- there are three tenant spaces, a beauty salon, nail salon, and a restaurant. And when the building is done, hopefully, there will be two salons, one office, and one restaurant with takeout.
Okay.
So in that, in that commercial space, because now that that commercial space is extended onto the presently vacant area, so the commercial space becomes slightly larger. But the similar, similar uses are proposed for the new building.
And talk to us about the unit breakdown. The bedroom's square, average square feet?
The bedroom breakdown is, there are seven studios, six one-bedrooms, and one two-bedroom. And I do want to make a point, and Mr. Frankie will have the square footages. Hopefully, he's been unmuted, but we'd like to make a point very clearly that in following the recommendation of Counselor Arroyo and the preferences of Mayor Wu's administration, the owner has agreed to go to 20% affordability on this project.
Okay.
Is Mr. Frankie unmuted? Could you go through the square footages of the, of the units, Matt? Is he not with us?
What's the name, Frank, what's his name?
Matt Frankie, F-R-A-N-K-E.
One second, I'm sorry. Okay, go ahead, Matt.
Hello, everyone.
Hey, Matt, the, Matt, the question was on the unit square footages?
Can you give us the average square footage for the studios, the one-bedrooms, and the two-bedrooms, please?
Hi, everyone. Yeah, this, the studio is approximately 470 square feet. Well, the studios are approximately 470 square feet. The one-bedroom is approximately 605, and the, and the single two-bedroom is 994.
Any roof deck proposed?
No.
Any decks proposed?
There, yes, along Washington and Moss Grove. Not for every unit, but for approximately half, well, maybe more than half the units.
And is this, is this, is this an elevator building? It must be.
Yes, it is.
Okay. And any parking whatsoever?
No.
No parking at all? Okay. Um, and is that a headhouse on the top that I'm seeing?
That would be the single stair required by code to access the roof for maintenance purposes only.
Only, okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good, um, yes, that is a headhouse for, and it looks like the elevator override as well are combined together in the rear. You know, I think it's a little bit taller. This is a little bit bigger of a development than down on this end of Washington Street, but it is along the main thoroughfare, so I don't really have any questions on the proposed stuff.
Any questions from the board?
Yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'm looking at Google Maps, and there's a billboard that's shown there. Is that on the building or is it in the rear of the building? Existing building.
I am unaware of, Matt, Ward, is there unaware of--
I don't think there's a billboard there.
No, there's, I, there's no billboard on top of this building.
Okay, it sure looks like it from the picture, but, and, um, the, the parking, so you're not only not adding parking, but you're actually eliminating parking because that empty lot has been used for parking at the present, is that right?
There is a small surface parking lot, well, call it a parking lot, but dimensionally, it, it really doesn't even comply with current dimensional standards. It, it's really a tight, little asphalted surface area that, but yes, there are probably spaces for two or three cars there currently.
And do you--
And my final question is, uh, this is four stories. It appears again from Google Maps that most of the buildings-- I mean, I would, I would agree with Mr. Robinson that Washington Street is a main thoroughfare, and that, that's a good place for density. But it does seem like most of the other buildings in the area are three stories. And this would be higher than, than in terms of context, it would be higher than most of the buildings around.
There is a project that was approved and, and I believe is starting to get under construction, right just a few doors down on the corner of Washington and Arkdale, that is being proposed, well, is, is being constructed as four stories. It's actually a very similar size to this project. And there's also another project that you'll be seeing. Actually, if you're looking at the drawing now, right to the left on the left there, it's a different project that I happen to be the same architect of. It's a different owner entirely, but I happen to be the same architect, that's the only connection. But they will also be proposing a similar height project. So, um, that's, and we, on the other project, we spoke with the BPDA, and they felt that the four-story was a good height for this project. However, on this project that we're speaking of today, just to be clear, they did mention that they have been recently directed to not be involved until after CBA approval. So we haven't met with the BPDA on this project.
And if I may, Mr. Fortune, I, I, I believe there are a couple of buildings on the opposite side of the street, within the next block or so, that are roughly the same size as well. Is that not correct, Matt, if you remember from the plans?
That's correct, and I happen to know that there is one four-story also being proposed across the street. But that's, you know, neither here nor there as far as this project is concerned.
Yeah, Mr. Quilty, it's Mr. Erlich, by the way, but--
I'm sorry.
Okay, but I'm getting on--
I probably have a blank spaces here, I'm sorry.
All right, we're both, we're both marked, so that's fine. The, again, the Google Maps is showing three-story buildings on either side. But, but enough said on that.
So this is on top of Arboretum Grill, right?
Correct.
Okay, so this looks like this four-story building is going to start changing the character of Washington Street in this, in this area. Because, just because of the materials that are being used and the height of the building. You just talk to us about the context again, because it is, it is a part of the city that could perhaps accommodate a greater density. However, is, is four stories right for it and with no parking? Because it appears that the side streets somehow have an issue with, with parking.
Well, I'm, I'm, I think in terms of, I'm sorry, I think in terms of the, the context, it, it seems as though the development of the area is more in the direction of, of the four-story buildings than not, understanding that there are some threes, some fours, some lower. But again, given what's, what's proposed next door, what's been approved apparently across the street nearby, it seems as though this is in, in order to create the housing, that these are appropriate heights. There really wasn't much parking to begin with. I mean, that lot, as Matt indicated, was perhaps a couple of vehicles. Again, I mean, this is as, as close to transit-friendly, we think, as one can get, given the number of lines that serve it and the distance to both commuter rail and the Forest Hills T Station. And we think in terms of maintaining the neighborhood local commercial uses at the, at the ground level and providing housing, and in this case, affordable housing, you know, we think is, um, you know, appropriate for the site.
Happy to be a Roselandale resident, Mr. Quilty. And we've seen what's happening on Hyde Park Ave, which has, which is good in certain ways, but this has a different kind of character. And this design is, is completely, you know, uh, you know, is really not supportive of what we see out there. You know, so I'll just put it there. In the meantime, any other questions from the board?
We'd certainly be happy with, with, you know, BPDA Design Review in that regard, Madam Chair.
You know, I would prefer that, in fact, that projects come to us with a sense of context and not having, and I've said this before, I think, not having this imprint that just is easily transportable from neighborhood to neighborhood that kind of eats away at the neighborhood character. We've seen that happen in South Boston. And I think, you know, the concern in East D is that the same thing is happening there. So we need to just, as the board, you know, have the applicants come through with something that is, you know, reflective of what's happening in the neighborhood. We cannot just toss everything to the BPDA for Design Review, because I think they also feel the pressure of being squeezed, squeezed. So I'll just put that out there, but in the meantime, any other questions from the board?
Yeah, sorry if I missed this. What was the rationale for no parking? Because I, I'm looking right adjacent to you, the BPDA looks like approved project with 16, 19 units and 16 parking spaces. So I'm just wondering what, you know, they're able to put parking on their, in their project?
So the, the project-- Yeah, sorry, Dennis. The project next door at 4011 Washington Street is twice as deep. The site is twice as deep as this project. And so we were able to put some parking in. This project has a very shallow depth of the site, and once you, once you add a driveway and circulation in and out and the parking spaces, it, it dimensionally does not fit to have any parking.
Okay, so, so the goal was to maximize, maximize the number of units, but minimize the community and, and maximize the impacts on the community then?
I'm sorry?
Um, I think you got it, Mr. Quilty, right? Okay.
Yeah, but I, I would just--
Okay.
We heard numerous times in our meetings with neighbors, with the city councilor, that--
I got it, I got it. So, um, let me just get testimony. Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
My name is-- Member of the board, my name is Eugene Ocho with the Mayor's Office Neighborhood Services. They did have a community process, um, and they were able to send in this, they were able to present this in front of the Neighborhood Association in the area, which is north, north of South Washington Street. One of the members from that Neighborhood Association was in support, and some other Butters were in support. However, we did receive about nine letters of opposition, twelve signatures also in opposition of this project. And the property owner also agreed to increase the affordable housing percentage of 220%, which is what the community had requested along with pedestrian access and plans for energy efficiency in the future. And we'd like to defer judgment to the board.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here. Sorry, Madam Chair, Secretary, we do have letters of opposition, we have no letters of support.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Jordan Freyas here from Counselor Ricardo Royall's office. I'd go with record support of this project, thank you.
Mr. Fortune, what are the letters of opposition based on?
Density, parking, all the things that Madam Chair has talked about on the board.
And Madam Chair, I do have a few raised hands here. I'll start with Karen, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Dr. Karen Weber Salamanca, I'm at 4 Archdale Road in Roselandale. I'm in Neura Butter. I'd like to speak to a couple, just number one, to support pretty much everything Madam Chair has mentioned about the character of that, how it's going to change things. But in that respect, to, um, to the point of 3992 Archdale, our neighborhood was not included in that conversation for whatever reason. So, and from my understanding, that building is stalled due to, um, problems of financing. So in order to go ahead and state that the building at the corner of Archdale in Washington, which is 3992 Washington, is a precedent for building four-story buildings. I don't agree with right now. What I do feel is absolutely, it's a building that would be very tight. It will feel very strange to the neighborhood. I had the opportunity to speak to a lot of neighbors. I have a couple issues with the way the property is being set right now, stating about the two, two salons, when in fact, there's a barber shop, and the barber shop thinks that they're continuing to stay there. So I don't understand why the barber shop isn't listed as, as one of the slots. Number two, the salon, they are not, they are in opposition. They're one of the ones who signed the petition, so they are not in agreement. who signed the petition, so they are not in agreement. And Arboretum Grill, when I spoke to the owner, is, is in favor, but he does not think that he's leaving his unit, he thinks that he will continue to use that restaurant and that it's not being rebuilt.
Thank you, thank you. Go ahead, just please wrap it up, because we do have other people we'd like to hear from, and please, may I make a note to, to the next speakers, give us new information, because it sounds like the speaker is very comprehensive, so thank you.
Go ahead, Mark.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board, I'd like to underscore everything that the chair said in terms of the, the building being completely out of place in this area and changing the neighbor, nature, the neighborhood, in addition to just the general issue of density related to the height and the footprint with no setbacks, there's a direct safety concern expressed by all of the abutters opposed regarding the turning onto Washington, which is already dangerous, this, it's, I guess it's called a Dorchester left, apparently, that's, that was a new one to me, but in any event, you have to creep out into Washington to even be able to turn a left as it is, it would only make that much worse, and the, the issue of no parking is just a complete non-starter, also with abutting neighbors with rental properties, resident, resident landlords who, who rely on the street parking here as part of the value of their rental, and who would be adversely injuriously affected by the, the spillover, which is inevitable, just if one just looks at that area and where the parking spaces exist, they exist on the side street.
Thank you, thank you. May I, Mr. Ambassador, can we hear from other people who've been raised?
Sure, Laurie, go ahead.
Hey, hi, my name is Laurie, at 49 Augustus Avenue, I'm, I'm not in a butter, and I am opposed, Madam Chair and members of the board. I want to raise the point about retail parking spaces, you know, when ISD calculates the number of spaces, I'm always certain that retail spaces are included, and particularly these businesses are going to need spaces for their customers. It takes two hours to get your hair cut, you want to have a nice meal, so I just want to raise that as a point for this property, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, I have a question. Did I get to Mark? Mark, are you all set? Did we hear from you? Did I see that your hand is raised?
Yes, you did, I would, I would observe that that parking lot, it does function as a parking lot for the existing businesses, there are six striped spaces, and so it's not like some random space that's being proposed to be...
Okay, thank you. Given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'm going to make a motion to deny without prejudice, I think there's, it's on a main drag, and it certainly could be more densely than it is, but this is packing too much into a small space. I'll second that, and, and I agree, I think there's some sensitivity in the right-hand side of the building in terms of the relationship on the street, but the corner building and also, I think, the building behind on Mossgrave Ave, you know, I'm a little bit nervous about how the building turns the corner, and it's almost being flopped up at the corner to be even more exacerbated the issue, so I second that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
I oppose, it's like, I'm opposed as well.
I'm with the motion, so the motion carries.
Calling your next case, calling VOA 1288289230 Washington Street. This is to construct a three-story, eleven-dwelling-unit structure with fifteen parking spaces, three spots plus twelve stackers. Violation is Article 51, Section 8, multi-family use is forbidden, Article 51, Section 23, off-street parking insufficient, Article 51, Section 40.5, off-street parking design, Article 51, Section 57.2, the existing building alignment conformity, Article 51, Section 9, the additional lot area is insufficient, Article 51, Section 9, employee ratio is excessive, Article 51, Section 9, the building has excessive entropy, Article 51, Section 9, the front yard is insufficient, and Article 51, Section 9, the rear yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Poldini on behalf of the applicant.
Sorry, Kyle, sir, sorry, Attorney Poldini to interrupt, Madam Chair, I need to recuse myself on this matter.
Okay, thank you.
And Mr. Poldini, it's hard time hearing you, I don't know if you can get closer to your computer, much appreciate it.
Sorry about that, Mark, I'll stop screaming. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board, Attorney John Poldini on behalf of the applicant. With me today is Tanya Carrera, who's the architect for this proposal, together with Jacob Simmons, who represents the owner. As Mr. Fortune read out, the proposal is a three-story, eleven-unit building with fifteen underground parking spaces. As many of you remember, this, this proposal came before the board in June, at the time it was a nine-unit building, the board as well as the community and the council had reservations presenting a nine-unit building, if there would be no affordability. Working with the community and the elected, we changed the plans to reflect eleven units, maybe wants to provide a three-bed, two-bath, family-size unit, affordable, as well as a sizable contribution to the City Affordability Fund. I could go through the violations, Madam Chair, if you would like, of the unit sizes.
Both, please.
Okay, so, you, obviously, it's a multi-family proposal in a three-F zone, parking here, it's 1.75, so it would be twenty-two spaces, we're proposing fifteen spaces, lot area is fifteen hundred square feet, dwelling unit, we're at 925, FAR, we're at 1.4, height is thirty-five, we're at 37.5.
Oh, you have something, Mark, can you call us in?
Let me see who that is, I'm sorry.
Go ahead, just, Poldini.
Sorry, rear yard is forty, we're at 17.2, and our front yard is twenty, so it does comply with zoning. The unit sizes, on the first floor, we have a 1331 square foot, three-bed, two-bath, a thousand forty-nine square foot, two-bed, two-bath, and a fourteen hundred seventy-eight square foot, three-bed, two-bath. Floors two and three are identical, so we have a thirteen hundred and thirty-one square foot, three-bed, two-bath, eleven hundred and sixty-three, three-bed, two-bath, nine hundred and ninety-three, two-bed, two-bath, and seven twenty-five, one-bed, one-bath. And again, the reason for the changes was to enable one more family-style units, which we have added to it, and, you know, the property now is comprised of two buildings, one has a three residential units and another has a commercial space.
Okay, so just, I'm sorry, council, let me just understand then, so you will not be providing affordability onsite, you would be rather putting into the fund, is that what I'm understanding?
No, no, Madam Chair, we are, we're, we're providing a, a three-bedroom, two-bath, affordable unit at seventy percent AMI onsite, and in addition to that, we're making a, I think approximately $125,000 contribution to the City Affordable Fund.
Okay, so one affordable at seventy percent, okay.
And just three-bed, correct.
Okay, and then, Mr. Robinson, how are the plans?
Plans are fine, I guess I just have one question, I didn't hear this case before, but, so, I appreciate the parking, is the parking requirement and the stacker requirement, is that actually pushing up the building height a little bit here? Because, I mean, the grade slopes, but I'm just trying to understand how the building's sitting on the ground, feels like it's elevated up.
So, Mr. Robinson, Tanya Carrera, who's the architect, is on this call, she could be unmuted.
Okay.
Yes, I'm unmuted, Tanya Carrera, Tulsa Design, so yes, the, the building currently is set up from the street substantially, so we're proposing to keep that height, repair the existing historic wall, and the parking would be below, so we'd have a ramp sloping down under the building.
Okay, and any other questions? Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Yes, Madam Chair, members of the board, Connor Newman with the Mayor's Office, Neighborhood Services, as the board is aware, this previously was before the board, prior to that, we had two abutters meetings, January 28th, April 8th, 2021, there was a mix of opinions that we received from the abutters, some concerned about the density on this side of Washington Street, with other residents fine with the projects and wanted to see high levels of parking to ensure that there wouldn't be impacts on Shannon Street around the corner. They went to the Brighton-Aulston Improvement Association, received their support, they also went to BAI, again with the most recent plans, and received the report again, with several members seeing that the project had been improved upon, and liked the affordability being added to the mix. We also had the, we also received a letter from the Alston-Bright Historical Society that was worried about the demolition of the home, which they think might have historic value, and then, lastly, the council's office is also here to testify and support as well. So with that information, we defer to the board, thank you.
Madam Chair, Secretary here, I don't know if Mr. D'Amico is on, but he's spoken on this one?
Mark, I am, I'm right here, and, Madam Chair ladies and members of the board, I'd like to request that the space closer to the stackers be removed and increase the width of the space furthest away, to twelve feet by twenty, to make sure that there's adequate allowance for handicap access and egress.
So backward, then, adjust the parking you're, you're suggesting to fourteen spaces or thirteen spaces?
Would be fourteen spaces.
Thank you, Mr. D'Amico.
Good afternoon, this is Maureen McCraven, Council of Bray's office, councilor would like to go on record as being in support of this project, we appreciate the changes that the proponent has made since last time they appeared before the CBA, and we appreciate their inclusion of a three-bed affordable unit, thank you.
Okay, and I do have a raised hand, John Cuzak, go ahead, can you state your name and add, oh, I'm sorry, Annabella, I do see your hand is raised, I'll start with you. Okay, Annabella?
Madam Chair, member of the board, Annabelle Gomson, the Brighton-Aulston Improvement Association, we'd like to go on record in support, thank you.
Thank you, Annabella, okay, and John Cuzak, go ahead.
I'm John Cuzak at 186 Washington Street in Brighton, and I, with the changes that have been made, I would like to go on record as supporting this project.
Thank you. I have no additional raised hands.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve BPDA design review.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Enjoy the rest of your day.
Thank you.
Calling a lost case for 10:30, calling VOA 911-768-1524, VFW Parkway. This is an existing yoga studio space to be converted into a retail marijuana dispensary establishment, where it includes all new interior fit-up and exterior modifications to the storefront. Violation is Article 56, Section 15, a cannabis establishment need additional. Name and address for the record, please.
Oh, Madam Chair, members of the board, this is Mike Ross, attorney with the law from Prince Lobel, I'm joined here today with Peter D'Agostino, consultant to the team. This project, Madam Chair and members, should look familiar to you, we were before you in August of last year for a board of final arbiter, if you recall, that's a good photo, actually, to refresh your recollection, if you recall, we moved from the basement of the beige building to the right of the former yoga studio, that's on the left in the purple, you could maybe zoom in just a teens bit more, just to get a sense, and we are, we were there to move to the building on that left right there. And today, we're here for a use matter only, no, no physical changes at all to the plan, except for actually the buffer requirement that the board, that your board had as a proviso. And so what we have here is, with, there will be the addition now of adult use to an existing medical marijuana approved dispensary at the location. Like I said, there are no other changes to the plans, there was the buffering through the materials, if we want to scroll through quickly, this is just on the site plan, you can go, go back there to the site plan, this is a multi-tenanted property in West Roxbury, there are three other tenants on the site, there is approximately thirty parking spaces in an open parking lot on the front of the building, deliveries to the facility, which is that white square, about twenty-eight hundred square feet, will be conducted to the rear of the building, the next slide shows you a, a floor plan, it's now in its construction plan state, so a little more detail, but the same floor plan we showed you back in August, the left being the entry, the rear being the delivery area, dedicated entry in the center door with a separate exit on the, in the, in the, on the, on the lower portion of your, of your screen. We also provided a schematic, Madam Chair, I know some elevations, of course, so the one on the right shows you the, the front door of the facility, again, you enter through the center, you leave through the right window on the left, you see the back door?
You've talked us through before how the, the facility would work, just clarify for us about deliveries, again?
Yeah, so deliveries would be, would take place on that left elevation that you see on your upper-left corner of the screen, that is at the rear of the building, probably once a week, maybe twice a week for the deliveries, there is, the last slide will show you, I know sometimes you like to see the schematic of the, kind of like the layout of the cameras and where they are, there are total, there are twelve cameras on the outside of the building, thirty-two cameras on the inside of the building.
Okay, councilor, who owns this lot? Because did we, we might have requested screening and buffering, did we?
Yeah, you did, the front, it's, we're renting this, this property from the landlord, long-term landlord who's been in place, if you go to the first slide again, you can see the, where we wound up with the design review buffering that you requested with the BPDA, you can see, really, in two places, beyond the minimum of five feet, we went well beyond that, the upper corner, as you can see, as you enter to the, the actual drive area, the driveway area, kind of clean up the, the front of that building, and then when you go into our, our building, you can see that corner area has now been landscaped, and we're actually going to be creating a new fence line between those two landscaped elements, so a fairly kind of robust landscaping scheme applied to this.
No, we are appreciative of this, but the question becomes for the rest of the property. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are fine, and I concur a hundred percent, I appreciate the landscaping effort on the edge here, but seems like it really needs some help along the main street, and I, I don't know if that's even under this purview, but it would be great if that could expand down the street sides. No questions on the actual plans, thanks.
Any, any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the board, Jake Lacy from the Office of Neighborhood Services, my predecessor, Jack Duggan, hosted a community meeting on the fourteenth of October, an additional meeting was held with the West Roxbury Neighborhood Council that same month, the council voted seven-one in support of the project, we have not received any letters of opposition, at this time, we defer to the board.
I do have a raised hand here, one second, Robert Nazer. Go ahead, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, I will, my name is Robert Nazer, night, twelve, fif, twelve, I'm an abutter to the property at 1528A VFW Parkway, I oppose the granting of the use for this cannabis use for this property, and I also have concerns about deliveries, if they're delivering to their, to the rear door, as the applicant stated, I believe that they would have to cross over my property line to make those deliveries, so that's a concern that I have with regard to this specific use. There was not an issue with the yoga studio. Thank you.
I have no additional raised hands at the moment.
Mr. Ross, a quick response, I'm assuming everything can be accommodated on-site?
That's correct, there is no need to cross onto the property.
Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve.
Do, do we want to confirm what we've done in the past for this petitioner only, and continue with the design review, just so that it's on the record when it goes up to the registry?
That's fine.
Okay. Is there... Is there a second?
Next.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. It is, it is now 12:29. Amazingly, we've met our schedule. Uh, let's take a five-minute break and, uh, we resume at 12:35. Uh, Mr. Fortune, I see you there.
I'm still here, Madam Chair, I haven't left yet.
Mr. Olick?
Here.
Mr. Do- Ms. Dong?
Present.
Uh, Mr. Regiro?
Here.
Uh, Mr. Ligris? Uh, Mr. Robinson?
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. Mr. Ligris, are you still here? Um, Mr. Hampton?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Excellent. Um, I think we need to probably let Mr. Ligris know that he's muted. Okay, let's, um, let's go, um, Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay, good.
I'm going to call the rediscussions for any deferrals or withdrawals. Give me the address first, please.
Mr. Secretary, um, the first two matters on the agenda for 12:30?
Thank you, Mr. Moranci. With their companion cases. Yes, thank you, Mr. Moranci. Calling case BOA 115-3857-127 Bolton Street. There is a companion case BOA 115-3868-152 West Third Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, my name is George Moranci, I'm an attorney with the business address of 350 West Broadway in South Boston. Uh, Madam Chair, members, I'm afraid that this is an unavoidable deferral request. Uh, we had set, uh, submitted revised plans, uh, to the Inspection Services Department on February 16th. Uh, we have not been, uh, able to get the updated approved plans back from the Plans Examiner. He's on vacation this week, uh, so I don't have the updated plans for review by the Board today.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry, Madam Chair, I need to, I was just going to recuse myself from this vote, Ligris.
Okay. Um, um, let's just see, um...
The day will be April 26th at 11:30.
Okay. Excellent, see you then.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 12:30 cases?
Uh, Mr. Fortune, 593-595 Albany Street.
Thank you, Mr. Lacass, calling case BOA 124-6711-593-595 Albany Street. Name and address for the record, please.
Mark Lacass, Lacass Lot 75 Arlington Street in Boston. I understand from Stephanie Haynes that there is a note on the file that, um, this was deferred to this date but needed to be re-advertised for April 5 based on a change to the plan so that it's, it's, it's being advertised for April 5, so just wish to confirm that that is the case.
That is correct.
May I have a motion then?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed and we know it's April 5?
April 5th at 11:30.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for 12:30?
Deferral, uh, 55 Boden Ave.
Thank you. For the record, calling BOA 120-2529-55 Boden Avenue. Name and address for the record, please.
Uh, name is Gabriel Labach Jenkins, address is 55 Boden Ave.
And tell us the reason for the request?
Uh, we're still working with ISD, just going back and forth, they keep asking a little bit after, a little bit after. We hope to resolve it soon.
Okay, is this your second or third, uh, request for the...
Third, I believe.
Third, okay.
Madam Chair, it's their fourth.
I'm sorry.
Okay, it's not, it's not looking good, so please make sure, um, um, that you just get your act, your, uh, ducks lined up so that we can proceed with this case, okay?
Thanks very much.
May I have a motion, please?
Motion to defer.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, please, please give them a little, uh, longer time. Mr. Fortune?
Yes, Madam Chair, we can do, uh, May 10th at 11:30.
May 10th, 11:30, thank you very much.
Okay, see you then.
Are there any other deferrals or withdrawals for the 12:30 cases? There are none, I'll go to the first case. Calling, sorry. Calling BOA 117-5371-20 Center Street. This is to construct a one-story building, training, just training setup for youth build Boston. The main use would be a wood shop and accessory educational space, slab-on-grade, wood frame and light metal construction. Violation's Article 50, Section 28, use of a trade school use is forbidden. Article 50, Section 29, lot frontage isn't sufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the rear yard isn't sufficient. And Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Mr. Chavez? Looking for the name, didn't see them checking earlier. Does anyone on the call, can you raise your hand if you're here for this case?
We can come back, um, Madam Chair.
Okay, good.
Let's go to the next case. Calling BOA 118-9307-3-Half Moon Street. This is to convert an existing basement into a fourth unit in an existing three-family structure. A violation of Article 50, Section 28, four units in a three-F zone is conditional use. Article 50, Section 43, off-street parking is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the additional lot area is insufficient. Article 50, Section 29, the foyer ratio is excessive. And Article 50, Section 29, the usable open space is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Sorry, there's a raised hand here, um, Joseph Luna, who's been unmuted, sent a request to unmute you, are you here for this case?
Um, yes, I am. Can you hear me? Okay, Joseph Luna, Luna Design Group, 100 Conerka Hill Drive, Suite 406, Danvers, Massachusetts, 01923. Uh, we are the project architect for this, for this project, representing Francois Toca, the owner. Um, this is a continuation of a prior hearing with the request to ask for additional information regarding the profile of the, of the proposed basement and its relationship to grade, um, ceiling height, et cetera. On January 29th, we submitted a revised set of the drawings to show the requested information and, and elevation as far as what the relationship is of the proposed basement unit, um, to grade and additional information regarding ceiling height. That drawing is, is included in Sheet A401. Um, we also denoted specific information regarding window sizes and egress. Um, we've all required building codes regarding bedroom, bedroom egress. Uh, we've gone through the public hearing process already.
So please, so please, um, can we, um, can you give us details because, about the floor to ceiling height in that basement?
Um, yes, okay.
Just make, tell us the story about, about why this should be considered by us.
All right. Again, it is a pre-existing basement space, um, that, that my client wants to turn into a legal fourth unit. We have a ceiling height of over seven feet, seven foot zero and a half, um, throughout the entire space. We have a full height along the, um, the east side of the building. You can see on Sheet A401 where the egress door is out of the unit, entry door into the unit and the relationship of the window well. You'll also see a dashed line through that elevation with the grade beyond on the west side. And you can see that the building is sitting above, above grade for this basement level. Um, as part of the work is, is again defined, we will be putting in a full NFPA 13R sprinkler system to bring the building up to current, current life safety standards for a multi-family building.
And what's the proposed size of that unit?
954 square feet.
Okay, and utilities are separate?
Yes.
Okay, and, um, floor to sill height on the other side?
Um, floor, floor to ceiling height is one floor to sill...
Floor to sill, yeah.
Uh, floor to, or excuse me, ceiling to grade height is approximately four feet. It's, it's a slope site, so it varies.
Okay. How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, the plans are, are good. Um, they did bring back the information that we requested in terms of the sill. It is a fully exposed, um, sort of the side and rear, um, where the main, one of the bedrooms is. And the other side, it does appear that, um, the natural grade is roughly right at the sill height of the adjacent, uh, bedroom window on the other side. So, um, I think the information, uh, is here for us to make a assessment of this.
Okay, and, uh, was this the one that we, no, this is Roxbury. Um, on the parking, uh, what's the parking situation here?
Um, there are two tandem parking spots currently on, on the site. Um, and that's, that's what we have for available off-street parking now.
So tell us which, um, plan we should look at to see where the tandem parking is?
Um, we're looking at the site ser- site survey right now. If you look toward the west side of the, of the building, um, you'll see where the drive, you'll see where the driveway is and there are two tandem parking spots there. On the east side, there is a walkway that extends from the Half Moon Street to the back unit.
Um, so the parking would be in that driveway then?
Yes, yes, those are current existing two tandem spots.
Uh, Mr. Robinson, would that, um, get in the way of any, uh, egress or access issues to that basement unit?
I, I don't believe it would, actually, because I don't think there's enough, um, space to, that, you can see in this plan, there's a, a bay window. Um, so the vehicles, actually, one will be in the front yard, uh, it looks like, and then one would, I don't, I'm not sure if Mr. D'Amico even saw this, but, um, it looks like maybe there's a space for one, um, from the front of the building to the dorm or, or sorry, the bay window where is where the egress or the window from the bedroom is. So I'm not, there's not enough room to get a car past that in the property line.
No, they, they cannot.
There's a fence. So it might be a question if there's even two spots.
Yeah, it's a type, it's a, it's a type two.
Yeah.
Okay, any questions from the Board?
Yeah, I'm a little confused. I, I thought that the applicant said that the floor to ceiling height in the basement was a little over seven feet. If this is a four-unit, um, uh, building, then it has to, then the code requires it's a minimum of seven foot six.
The floor-to-floor is eight foot eight, the ceiling height is seven foot zero and a half. I believe mass amendments on this allows us to carry this at still seven feet.
Wait, I'm sorry, what was the last thing you said? You believe the what?
Mass, mass building code amendments allow a seven-foot floor, floor, floor-to-floor at a ba- at a floor-to-ceiling height at a basement.
My understanding is one or two units of seven feet is, uh, acceptable, but if it's a three or four, anything more, it's seven foot six.
I would have to go back and research that code.
Uh, I'm, Mr. Robinson, I, uh, that's, I would assume that to be the case.
Correct.
Okay, well, we got a problem then.
Yeah, we do.
Okay. Excellent. Um, just put that on the record that this technically, um, and by building code is below, below the threshold. Um, may I just go out and see who's, um, out there to speak either in support or in opposition?
Madam Chair, members of the Board, Jay Song-Gan, Roxbury Liaison from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. So just to highlight, as this was already spoken about before, and the Butters meeting was held on June 17th in which there were letters of support and opposition sent in and also support and opposition was voiced on the community meeting. Uh, the opposition primarily just having the basement unit with the support being of the basement unit. Thank you.
Okay, and you know, and you understand that, uh, this, this just doesn't meet a building code requirements?
Uh, yes, and I think one of these...
No, 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 I'm talking to Jay Song, thanks. Um, anybody else to go ahead and get on the record, please?
Madam Chair, I have one raised hand. Bob?
Yes, uh, Bob D'Amico, BTD, uh, Madam Chair lady, members of the Board, I don't see any parking spaces reflected, um, on the plan. Uh, I'm sorry if it's there, but, um, I can't see it. And, um, I would like to ask a proviso, uh, that they put the, um, parking space or parking spaces on the plan, uh, for my review.
Thank you. Um, Jeff, uh, Mr. Hampton, did the BPDA have an opinion on this?
Um, I will double check, it was deferral, so hold on just, uh, a minute.
Mr. Hampton, uh, Mark Fortune, uh, the original date is December 7th, if that helps you?
Okay, so our original, thank you, Mr. Fortune, for that. Uh, our original went to our Board in November 18th, approval with proviso that no building code relief be granted.
Okay, so you picked up on the building code, but...
Yep.
Okay, and then we have the concern about the parking. Okay, um, may I have a motion, please?
I'm, I'm going to make a motion, deny without prejudice. Uh, they, they need, they need to address the building code problem and the only way to do that is by excavating and then you've got a, a different situation with the grade height. So they, they need to come back. I'm not sure if this is fixable, but, uh, so...
I'll, I'll second, and I think also to meet Mr. D'Amico's, uh, recommended, or sort of request for a, a parking needs to be, uh, defined.
Yep.
Is there a second? Oh, yes, there is a second. Hold up, favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, you're all, um, sorry, that's the decision by this Board.
Okay, so just to be clear?
Uh huh.
Um, what we, what we'll do, this is a, is a, is a denial without prejudice?
Yes, please, uh, talk, yeah, please talk to the staff, please talk to the B, uh, the Board of Appeal staff and they can guide you, okay?
Okay, what we'll do is we'll make that revision.
Thank you.
Calling the next case, calling BOA 126-2944-302-316 Boden Street. This is a ruv of viso for takeout, granted to the petitioner only. The violation's Article 7, Section 4, other protectional conditions. Name and address for the record, please.
Hi, um, Mark Reed, 310 Boden Street.
Um, so please tell us what you're proposing?
Well, I'm, I'm looking to get permission to do my takeout.
Okay, so first of all, what's the name of the restaurant?
The Hummingbird.
Hummingbird and, um, let's see, is this, is this in the basement or is it above grade?
It, it, it's two floors, it's the basement and you have, you have, um, the, the, the upper level where is, is, is already existing.
Okay.
So I just decided to give you, um, the two plans for the basement and the actual restaurant.
Okay, and, um, have you experienced with takeout?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, where? In, in Boston?
Yes, ma'am. Um, Hummingbird, um, Country Kitchen and Blue Love, uh, with the grill, so I've, I've been here over 30 years.
Okay, okay, excellent. Um, how are the plans, um, Mr. Robinson?
Uh, plans are, uh, sufficient, um, looks pretty straightforward to me in terms of the existing layout. Fairly small dining area, so no questions on this.
Excellent. Um, any questions from the Board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition? Proposals?
Good morning. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the Board, Denise DeSantos from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant has met with the community, gone through the community process, they have directed Butters support, they have... have direct the butter support, they have the main streets and the association's support, and at this time, we would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good morning, Madam Chair, I have one raised hand. Bob, did you want to speak on this case as well?
Yeah, you have to email.
Bob?
Yes.
You have your hand raised. Are you speaking on this case as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, no, I, I made a mistake.
Okay, Madam Chair, sorry about that.
No worries. Okay, may I have a motion, please?
Motion to approve, we will take out language for this application.
And I, signage will be part of that, I assume, because I see there'll be a signage change, but the sign.
Then, then BPDA design review for the signage.
For the signage, yeah. The next, the next hearing looks good, no questions on that, then. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. You're up for those provisos. Good luck.
Thank you.
Calling a next case, calling BOA one-two-seven-two-zero-six-nine-twenty-six Tylesborough Road, Tylesborough Street. This demolishes the existing structure and erect a four-unit dwelling townhouse design with roof decks, which needs a townhouse, and parking for eight vehicles at the rear of the building. Violation is Article sixty-five, section fifteen, use is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, the laudary is insufficient. Article sixty-five, section nine, the laudary ratio is excessive. Article sixty-five, section nine, the building height is excessive in stories. Article sixty-five, section nine, the front yard is insufficient, and Article sixty-five, section nine, the side yard is insufficient. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Mark Lacasse, Lacasse Law, seventy-five Arlington Street in Boston, attorney for the applicant and proponent, owner of the property, Mark Zabatski. The existing property is a, a small, older rundown, single-family home that is proposed to be raised and to construct, as you see on the screen here, four townhouse-style units interconnected, but they very much read and live as single-family homes, each unit being three stories in height, seventeen-hundred-and-twenty-eight square feet of living area, three-bedroom, and two-and-a-half bath for each of the units. The zoning relief that we seek today is, first item is a use violation. The four units taken together constitutes a multifamily residential use, and this is a two-F sub-district. The zoning code refusal letter.
Hold up, hold up one minute, as you're going through, two-F what?
I'm sorry, two-F five thousand, and.
And what's the lot size, yeah, go ahead.
Lot size is seven thousand eighty-nine square feet, so we exceed the minimum lot size by quite a bit. On that point.
Tell us how, tell us how parking will work.
Yep, so, Madam Chair, this case was before the board on January eleven, at which time we sought a deferral based upon a negative recommendation from the BPDA on the parking configuration, as well as Mr. D'Amico. The original plan showed eight tandem-style parking spaces in the rear yard, and if the host can scroll ahead, next one, please, there's, there's a new configuration, and the proponent has met with BPDA staff, as well as sought input from Mr. D'Amico. The new parking arrangement is four parking spaces, here you are, right here, four parking spaces in the rear yard, utilizing the existing curb cut and driveway along the side of the four townhouses, with sufficient maneuverability and turning radius for each of the four. So the four parking spaces for the four unit actually satisfies the parking requirement, and there's no violation on the refusal letter for the parking configuration, which is a much improved condition from what was originally proposed.
And so this meets the parking requirement?
It does.
Okay, so we can, we just need to know in the, in anything that goes up to the registry that there is no request then for parking, okay?
Right.
How are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
I think the plans are good. You know, I know this neighborhood pretty well, and I know I've seen some share of new projects, but I think the townhouse, sort of stepping down the site and the street, I think is something that feels fairly well, well-done on the street. So no, no real questions about the proposed size of the unit or the scope from, from me.
It looks pretty good with that grade change, too.
Yeah, there, there, there are roof decks shown, and they are serviced also by a hatch. I just want to also clarify.
Okay. Any questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this proposal?
It's good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. George Wynn with the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. Our office held two butters meetings for the proposal in September, in November of last year. There were a number of community members in support based on the incorporation of feedback and reduction in size, but also a number in opposition based on density and design. At this time, our office would like to defer to the judgment of the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Joe McEchrance, City Councilor, Frank Baker's office. We'd like to go on record in support of the project.
Madam Chair, I have about five hands raised. Chris, you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Chris Rule, twenty-three Velma Road. I've had a chance to review the plans, I think the design and townhouse format really works well for this neighborhood, and just wanted to also offer my support as a butter for the project.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Meg A., you've been unmuted, can you state your name and address for the record, please?
Hi, my name is Meg Alvarado, my address is seven Payne Street.
Are you here to pause on the case?
You in support or in opposition?
Yeah, I'm just calling in to offer my support for these plans. I'm in a butter, and I like the townhouses, I think they'll be great, and addition for the neighborhood.
Thank you.
John, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, John Ivanoff, I'm at one-five-five King Street, in support of the project. I think, just like some of the other butters, the townhouse style suits the neighborhood. It's nice that they kept the height to three stories, and I think it'd be a great addition to the neighborhood.
Thank you. Dan, you've been unmuted, state your name and address for the record, please?
Sure, Dan Sacker, I'm at five Payne Street. So looking out on, on where this project would be, and, and similar to what everyone else said, I'm, I'm in support of the project. I think it'd be a great addition, and saw some of the other townhouses go up, and think it, think it'd be a good fifth neighborhood.
Thank you. Jonathan, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Hello, I'm speaking on behalf of myself and my husband. My name is Milo Mopoko, and the address we're at is four Payne Street. We are in support of this project, we have a shared property line with the project, and we're excited to see the improvement that it will bring to this neighborhood.
Thank you. Tim, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please? Tim?
Can you hand me that?
Yes, I can. State your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Madam Chair, Tim Murray, eighty-four Houghton Street, lifelong Dorchester resident, adamantly opposed to this proposal, clearly based on the number of variants is sought, it's improper for the lot, the parking is clearly insufficient. On a personal note, my home is my sanctuary, my wife and I and my three children all have professional responsibilities that come with very unique stressors. My son Patrick is currently forward deployed to Eastern Europe, about a hundred miles from the Russian border.
So, so, Mr. Murray, Mr. Murray, are you in opposition of this project, then?
Yes, ma'am, opposition.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
Madam Chair, would you like to hear?
Yes, may I hear from the next person?
Deborah and John Scully, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
My name is Deborah Scully, I live here with my husband, John.
I'm here.
We live in a three-family house in Dorchester. We are the only people living in this house, our daughter has moved to Vermont, and we basically use all the.
Hold on, it's, what is.
We are adamantly opposed.
What is your address? Miss, Miss Scully, what is your address? What, put your address on the record, too? Can all speakers please put their name and address on the record before you give testimony? Thank you.
Okay. Deborah and John Scully, seventy-three Houghton Street on Dorch, in Dorchester. I am around the corner from the development. We are adamantly opposed to the development, as all the neighbors are on our street who have lived here for a long time. We are tired of development, people fail to mention that the Murphy School is at the end of Tylesborough Street, where this development is located, and I really don't understand how someone who lives on Velma Road and King Street have any bearing, because they're not really director butters. And my neighbors are fed up with going to these meetings, which is why there are not a lot of us here. But again, I feel like I'm being forced out, people are waiting for me to die so they can buy my house, and I'm very upset with the city.
Okay, thank you. That's why we asked, that's why we ask for people's address, so we get a sense of how close people are to the property. Miss Ambassador, can you move to the next couple of people, and then we'll close out comments?
Four, I believe that was it, Madam Chair, let me make sure that Chris, Chris?
I, I already spoke.
Okay, okay, can you lower your hand, please? That's it, Madam Chair, no one else.
Given all that information, may I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve a BPDA design revision.
Is there a second?
I'll second, Eric.
All those in favor?
Aye, aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I can't hear you, Janie, I'm sorry, I'm in a meeting, sorry.
Calling the next two cases, calling BOA one-two-seven-one-four-zero-eight-twenty Gaylord Street, there's a companion case, BOA one-two-seven-one-four-one-one-twenty-two Gaylord Street, this is for twenty Gaylord Street. Building new three-level, three-family building. Access to driveway and parking for three motor vehicles in the rear. The violation is Article sixty-five, section sixty-eight, three-family detached dwelling is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient front yard setback. Article sixty-five, section nine, excessive FAR. Article sixty-five, section nine, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient lot size. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient lot width. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient lot width frontage. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient side yard setback. Article sixty-five, section eight, accessory parking forbidden, main use is forbidden. Article sixty-five, section thirty-nine, screening and buffering. This is for twenty-two Gaylord, is building a new three-level, three-family building. The swap, this would be proposed lot to three proposed parking spaces. There are a couple of different violations, so I have to call them in for the record. Article sixty-five, section nine, the insufficient open space. Article sixty-five, section thirty-nine, screening and buffering. Article sixty-five, section nine, the number of allowed stories has been exceeded. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient lot size. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient lot width. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient lot width frontage. Article sixty-five, section nine, excessive FAR. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient front yard setback. Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient rear yard setback, and Article sixty-five, section nine, insufficient side yard setback. Name and address for the record, please.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Andrew Litchfield at twenty-two Alpha Road in Dorchester. If I could just make one comment, on both of those at the bottom, there were changes made in January, and as you can see, at twenty-two Gaylord Street, we're now proposing a two-family building instead of a three-family. It also has four parking spots instead of three parking spots.
And do the plans reflect that?
They do.
Okay, and then at twenty, at twenty, you're still proposing three?
Correct, but we are, we added an, an additional parking spot, so it went from three to four parking spots. In total, it'll be five units with eight parking spots in the rear.
Okay, so tell us about the unit, let's see, so this is, and, and tell us, so these are two side-by-side lots, shared parking, is that what it, what it is?
Yes, Madam Chair. Currently, there is a fire-damaged vacant, single-family on the twenty-two Gaylord Street, which is the right side, and a vacant lot on the left side. So on, go ahead.
No, go ahead.
Okay, so on number twenty Gaylord Street, which you have in front of you, that is proposed typical three, three-decker, three-family, they're gonna be all two-bedroom, two-bathroom units, with about twelve-hundred square feet each. Storage will, basement will just be for storage, it'll be unfinished, and four parking spots in the rear, as we mentioned, the common driveway down the middle of both buildings to access the, the parking.
And tell us about twenty-two Gaylord?
Yes, Madam Chair. Yeah, so the twenty-two Gaylord Street is a two-family, there'll be two bi-level units, one is thirteen-hundred-and-seventy square feet, the other is thirteen-ninety square feet. Those will be three-bedroom, two-bathroom, two-and-a-half bathroom units each.
Any roof decks proposed?
There is a roof deck on the, on number twenty Gaylord Street, which is the three-family.
Is that just for the top unit?
It's gonna be just for the top unit, exclusive to the top unit.
Okay, okay, how are the, okay, I'm just looking, just wanna see the renderings, okay? Why were you deferred before?
It was because when we submitted the new plans, the, the notice went out with the old violations, with the old plans of three, two, three families, so we had to defer.
Okay, how are the plans, Mr. Robinson?
Plans are good. I think the, the adjustments to twenty-two, I think it is, where it's become a little bit more consistent with the street, I think is nice. So I do, I think there's been some nice improvements as well, so the, the twenty is still a, sort of, more of a traditional triple-decker, which isn't consistent on the street, but I think it's a mix that I think will work. So, no, no real questions on the proposal updates.
Any questions from the board?
Can we see elevations of twenty-two? And access to the deck on twenty is, is how, is by what?
To twenty, the roof deck will be off of the, I think it's in, it's in the unit, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's in the unit, and it shows a roof, a hatch, sorry, Mark.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Litchfield, can you please tell, tell us which plan we should be looking at to see the, the rendering for twenty-two?
This is your rendering for twenty-two.
This is twenty-two? Okay, oh, right. Okay, got it, okay. Any other questions from the board? Is anybody here to speak either in support or in opposition of this, these proposals?
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Denise DeSantis here from the Mayor's Office of Neighborhood Services. The applicant met with the Four Corners Main Streets and the Greater Neighborhood Association a few different times to meet the community's needs for this project, and they have support and direct the butter support. At this time, our office would like to defer to the board. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dustin Gardner on behalf of City Councilor, Worrell's office. We would also like to go on record in support, just lifting up that they have worked well with the community, and the community is in support of this.
Madam Chair, I have one raised hand. Bob, you've been unmuted, if you can state your name and address for the record, please?
Yes, Bob D'Amico, Boston Transportation Department. Madam Chair, ladies, and members of the board, I would like some clear plans, rather than the smish-mash of all plans put together, I would just like to have clear plans that I would just like to have clear pan plans that depict the um most recent design, if I may.
Thank you. Um Mr. Ambassador, are we all set?
All set.
May I have a motion, please?
I'll make a motion to approve with BPA design review and uh uh clean plans from Mr. D'Amico to ensure that the parking works.
Okay, is there a second?
Second, let Chris.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Ambassador, do you know if Mrs. Chavez is on for twenty cent a street? Or is anybody on for twenty cents a street?
I don't see. I see anyone locked in.
Okay, well, Madam Chair, it's now one-fifteen. I'll make a motion for denial without prejudice.
Excellent.
I can let Chris.
All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Meeting is now adjourned. See everybody in two weeks and see some of you in a month. Okay?